Welcome, everybody. We have our student rep from Wilson this evening, Mr. Dylan Bernstein, so he's going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
We are meeting together but broadcasting remotely tonight, and welcome all those who are participating by watching through YouTube. As a reminder, we welcome public comment and have provided a mechanism for you to make public comment by leaving voice messages to be played to the board and the public during our broadcast. If you wish to speak at a future meeting, please go to our public participation page on www.lbschools.net, which will give you more information about how to give public comment. As a reminder, in conformance with the Brown Act, when we hear testimony on an item that is not listed on the agenda, a full discussion of that topic would have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda, and in closed session today, the board approved a resignation agreement and general release with a permanent certificated teacher resolving all claims between the parties and providing for consideration. The board also approved a retirement agreement and general release with a permanent certificated teacher resolving all claims between the parties and providing for consideration. Each vote was unanimous with all five members of the board voting to approve. Okay, next on the agenda, public hearing, we have none. Call for agenda items for separate action and adoption of the agenda as posted.
Madam President, I'd like to make two suggestions for amendments to the agenda. One is a typographical error under the Teachers Association of Long Beach addendum to memorandum of understanding school opening. If you'll note on the first page of the item, the date is listed as August 18th, 2021, and we'd like to correct that to be listed as the original date, which was August 18th, 2020. The second, I'd like to propose that the item temporary addendum to athletic competition, extracurricular, and co-curricular activities be an action item only this evening, not an information slash action item.
Okay, thank you.
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor with a roll call vote. Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes 5-0. Approval of minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor. Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Hearing no opposition or abstentions, it passes 5-0. Introduction of our student board member. So, Dylan, this is the part where you get to give your report, and this is the part that we anxiously await because it's always good news. So, you have the floor.
Thank you for having me. I'm the spring ASB president at Wilson High School. We have been very busy on and off campus over the past year. In activities, we've created new institutions to stand the test of time, and more recently, we brought back some of our traditions in altered fashions to reflect the environment in which we live today. At the beginning of the school year, our Link Crew, sporting a reconfigured staff, created a virtual orientation that I'm glad to say reached out to 80% of our freshman class and put out a YouTube channel and website we call Woodyverse, an attempt to provide knowledge about Wilson to students who have never experienced it before. While adjusting to Canvas, we noticed that we did not have a centralized place for students to keep up with the activities we were offering, so to streamline that, the Bruin dens were born. Advisory tiles, which the Activities Office and ASB maintain, were made for each of the grades on campus, and thanks to the hard work of Mr. Saldivar, our head counselor, all students have a one-stop shop to find or learn anything they need for school. An idea that morphed over time was the concept of the Bruins Go Live. This series of webinars, performed for a half hour every Monday school night for the past few months, started as an outlet to further educate students on adjusting to virtual school, but ended up being a program where students could learn about topics from healthy eating to Wilson history. Bringing people together in this time of distance was the goal, and that goal was achieved. Another program that serves that goal made its debut this year, the Bruin Leadership Certification Program. BLCP was a series of seven classes, 10 sessions, designed to instruct on the premise of leadership in order to groom the next generation of leaders on campus and in the world. We came in with low expectations, but the inaugural crowd of 80 students became a family dedicated to working to be greater leaders in our community. Graduates of the program designated by this star pin are invited to come back to teach, which should institutionalize it as one of Wilson's beautiful activity programs alongside Link Crew, Feminine Leadership Academy, Young Black Scholars, our clubs, and of course, our student government. Speaking of that student government, several constitutional changes were made to help us achieve what in truth is our primary function, to represent the student body as a whole. First, the voting process will be moved into the classroom in order to guarantee a vote from our total school population. Second, we have added two new posts to the student government. First, the ASB Chief of Staff, a fifth cabinet member, but the second position is what we're most proud of. The new co-governors of diversity, equity, and inclusion are tasked with making our campus experience and student government itself more fittingly equitable and inclusive to our students of color. There's a vast discrepancy between the demographics of our school and our student government. Though we recognize that we've not actively worked to eschew students of color, we realize that some have felt less inclined to run for office or have a larger say in on-campus dealings. We seek to remedy that by having a position that works to act as a voice for our students of color, bring them into the fold of their government, and brainstorm ways to further ingratiate its activities to them. From now on, all students will be included, represented, and served properly as they have a right to be. I'm so excited to announce these such activities that we plan on to end this year. This is where Link Crew makes its triumphant return. An in-person freshman orientation is set to commence on the morning of next Saturday, the 24th of April. Link Crew is so excited to finally introduce this year's freshmen to their campus in a safe manner befitting of the times at hand. Earlier this afternoon, 345 freshmen have signed on to show up, so that's really exciting. A bevy of senior activities are also on the docket. Opened all seniors, hybrid or virtual. Senior ties will be worn, as they have always been worn, upon arrival to campus or in online classes on the week of the 19th to celebrate our return to campus and open our year as the senior class. On Thursday, April 22nd, we're hosting a senior sunset picnic, where seniors can gather outside socially distanced on campus to enjoy the sunset and be social in what feels like the first time in forever. On the week of May 10th, seniors will be wearing clothes from the schools they are attending in the fall in order to celebrate the accomplishment of moving on to the next stage of our education and our lives. On Friday, May 14th, the first annual Wilson Senior Scavenger Hunt will be followed by senior movie night, a chance for Bruin seniors to come together and watch a movie as it has been done for years. There will be a senior mug day the week of May 24th, where we can celebrate the largest number of senior mugs ever sold in a year by providing seniors with a tasty treat to be enjoyed in the mug itself. To finish the activities portion, on the night of Saturday, June 12th, prom and grad night are merged into a senior, single senior celebration on campus, and we are so glad to share that we have managed to make the experience more affordable in honor of the economic downturn we have faced recently, a price of only $40 a ticket. Outside our activities department, we've also been making large strides in the return to campus. All our sports teams have returned to campus, holding seasons, all in conjunction. As you can guess, it has been a mess, but it has been quite the pleasure. The leadership team also put together a series of videos to support teachers and students returning to campus. The student expectations video is set to be played today, it has been, and tomorrow in all English classes. I personally play the villain who doesn't wear his mask, and I get reprimanded very well, so it's good. Teachers have returned to campus. It's really, really exciting, some to work in our beautiful newly christened 1,000 building, ooh, ah, and socially distance the desks in their classrooms to promote a safe working environment. We all look forward to having students return next week, no one more than the students themselves. With that being said, at Wilson, we will continue to make it a great day to be a Bruin, no matter one's background. On a personal note, I have been so glad to help lead this charge, and I look forward to seeing our policies and institutions hold a positive effect on future Bruins. It has really been an honor to share with you all what we have been doing here tonight. I hope you all are as excited about these items as I am, as they're beautiful examples of people working together through a crisis to enact greater change and make others' lives more bearable and enjoyable. Something I've taken away from this year is that through all its troubles, it fostered an environment in which we are able to further recognize issues and promote change. For that, I'm truly grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. That was quite the report. I'm going to go out on a limb and say you're part of the drama program at Wilson.
That I am. I'm in the musical theater program.
Musical theater, mhm. Well, very good. I'm sure everybody at Wilson is very proud, but now I want to ask you about your future plans, because we're always very interested in that.
Well, though I cannot say Ivy Day treated me too well.
Well, that's their loss. Right?
True. The, I'm glad to say that probably within the next week, I'll be committing to the University of Michigan at Ann Arbor, so.
Well, very nice, very nice. Well, I think I speak for everybody when I say, "We have absolute confidence you're going to do well," but we wish you well anyhow. Thank you for being here and giving us that wonderful report. We understand it is technically a school night, so you may not be able to stay the remainder of the meeting. You're welcome to stay for the, you know, remainder of the meeting. If not, we understand if you need to go, you know, and take care of your own studies or that type of thing.
Honestly, they told me it would run very long, but I told the activities director that I wanted to stay because I'm frankly very interested in the dealings of this meeting, so.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will move on. Next on the agenda, we have communications. So, Mr. Moskowitz, I think, yes.
All right, good evening. So, I think this, the title of this section on our agenda is very appropriate. It's Student, Staff, and School Celebrations, and so it's my pleasure tonight just to take a few minutes to celebrate what has been, by all accounts, a very successful reopening of schools at our elementary K-8 and our Buffem TLC about two weeks ago now, on March 29th. And so first, I'd like to show a video that our M&amp;M team, MMS team, has put together, and then I'll share a few remarks after that.
378 days of individual struggles. 378 days on this journey together. 378 days, and our school family is finally beginning to come together again. We can't wait for all of our students to be able to return.
Thank you. So, I think it's interesting, one principal that we were meeting with during the week of the 29th said that we basically spent about 10 months of planning for about 10 minutes of students coming in, and really, if you were there, and many of you were there out at sites, the amount of energy and planning and thoughtfulness that went into really what amounted to, "Let's get kids on campus," and it took about 10 or 15 minutes that first day, and they were in their classrooms with their teachers, doing what teachers do all the time. But there was so much behind-the-scenes work, and I just want to take a few minutes and thank really a collaborative team throughout our district. When we think about our school staff, the amount of energy and thinking and planning that our administrators, office staff, custodians, nurses, our recreation aides, and many of our sites, our recreation aides were out there helping to screen, just doing amazing work, our nutrition workers, we had staff from middle school and high school coming down to our elementary and K-8 schools to support, district office staff out supporting, just being cheerleaders, encouragers, and then sometimes grabbing that handheld thermometer and taking temperatures. The school procedures ran very smoothly, the health screenings, cleaning, social distancing, but the amount of cross-departmental collaboration that has taken place for many months to make this a reality is just phenomenal, and I think some departments, I'll probably forget somebody that I shouldn't be forgetting, but I think about our operations, our maintenance, our facilities teams, our purchasing and contracts department that made sure we had all of the PPE and any other items we needed, and nutrition services, Mark Chavez and his team just routinely supporting our students and families and working with us to meet the needs of schools, our transportation department working overtime, many hours, to make sure our students with IEPs received the transportation they needed, nursing services, our team at OCIPD making sure our teachers had the curriculum documents they needed to reopen in a really intentional way and welcoming students back with our social-emotional focus, just a lot of departmental work. Our teachers really stepped up. I mean, we know, we've heard a lot about the challenges and the frustrations, and while that was probably still true, and many people probably felt various levels of emotion about coming back and greeting students, our teachers just did a phenomenal job. Our classrooms were so welcoming and engaging. While they were social distanced, there were still ways to make sure that students felt comfortable in their environment. Very high-quality lessons, just the planning and preparation was very obvious. And something I think is even, is equally as important as the reopening that happened that first week before spring break and then these last couple of days, is the amount of outreach that is continuing for our students who are remaining at home and are continuing to learn in an online fashion. And so I wanted to give you just a few examples of things that happened that first week at some of our schools, and we could probably find examples like this at every school. At Alvarado, the principal, Ms. Huber, is setting up weekly challenges. So, all the students at home are engaged in weekly challenges, and she connects with them every Monday to present the challenge to them and checks in with them at the end of the week. So, it's an instructional challenge, an engagement challenge, just something that is helping to motivate them. At Longfellow, there's a long tradition of a flag ceremony that takes place. They're continuing to hold that flag ceremony online so that all the students are getting it together at the same time, regardless of their learning environment. At Holmes, the principal, Ms. Grady, sent home care packages to every student. So, students coming in were getting a face mask and pencils and pens, and Ms. Grady made sure that every student, whatever their learning situation, that they were still going to receive those same care packages. At Los Cerritos, they're looking for opportunities for students at home and students in person to be able to connect, so there are these buddy-up opportunities, and they're doing similar buddy-up at Signal Hill. At Webster, they sent out postcards, encouraging postcards to every student who was at home, and including, in addition to that, students who were experiencing or having their birthday. The principal, Ms. Forrester, and her counselor are actually going out to the homes with a bouquet of balloons and encouraging the families that are at home, the students that are at home, that of course, for a six, seven, or eight-year-old, you know, having your birthday at school is always kind of the highlight, and so with them not necessarily being able to be at school, they're going out and celebrating them at their home. And again, those are just a few examples. We definitely encouraged our principals, and they've really stepped up to make sure that regardless of the learning environment during these last couple of weeks, all students are feeling supported. So, really some lessons learned, and you'll hear a little bit later today from my colleagues at the middle school and high school levels, they're getting ready. I have to say, it feels good to have accomplished the reopening, and now we get to sit back and watch them accomplish it, and I know they're going to do well, but really the lessons learned were a couple of things, not going to be surprising to anybody. Preparation is key, and you heard me reference all of these different departments throughout our district. The amount of time and energy that no one will ever really recognize that was put in by so many different staff members in our district to make sure that those 10 minutes were successful has been extraordinary, and it doesn't happen accidentally. It happens because we have great teamwork in our district, and whether they're school-site staff or district staff really stepping up. The communication is critical, and you're going to hear from Dr. Lund and Dr. Camarino, the communication from our schools, the communication from our district, we really heard a lot of appreciation from our parents regarding that. And then ultimately, I think, two groups really to thank. One is our parents, guardians, and families. The level of appreciation that they express for us is great, but our appreciation for them, for one, being that key instructional support for all of these months during the online learning, for those who are continuing to provide that to online, to being flexible with the scheduling that we're having to implement to ensure distance learning, they've just been very flexible, they've had a lot of grace, we haven't always done it right, we had some hiccups along the way, but just the amount of grace and appreciation from parents, and so I just want to give that back to them. And then last but not least, most amazing are our students. It was so exciting to see kids coming back in. They are incredibly resilient, and I know we talk a lot about the needs of students and what we're going to have to do moving forward to support students, and that is absolutely true, but the resiliency that we've seen in our students has been pretty profound, and so I think we saw, we felt, all felt very enthusiastic and very appreciative and very grateful to have students back in. We also recognize that that's not always the experience for all of our students, that we have students at home who can't come to school, who maybe are still experiencing trauma, and we're committed to regardless of the situation, regardless of the environment, to being there for them, looking forward in the coming weeks and months to sharing some specifics of our plans to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all students. But just really want to take a moment today, about two weeks after our successful reopening at elementary and K-, just to share some of those highlights. Could answer a few questions if need be, but just appreciate everyone's support in that way.
Mr. Moskowitz, I so want to thank you for the update around not just celebrating those students that are returning in person, and it's quite an accomplishment to every single individual in the district, including our students and their families, but in that update to also celebrate those students that are staying at home. So, just thank you personally for that update. It's an excellent reminder to our students and family that whether they're at home, whether they're in person, that they will be supported, so just my appreciation for you sharing that update in the context of supporting all students.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you so much for the update. I just, you reflected on, you know, all of the moving parts and the folks who may not be seen at the forefront, who have been doing the behind-the-scenes work. I was fortunate at Adams to be, when I was visiting, to be invited into the recades kind of debrief after that initial 25 minutes of welcoming students onto campus, and they were thrilled to be able to do it, but one of the things that I heard them say was how the social-emotional learning tricks and tips that had been given by curriculum had been so helpful, and that the principal's support, and really acknowledging that it was a team that welcomed students physically back, while they may have been the ones with the thermometers or the ones cheering and clapping, they had a deep appreciation and knowledge of the work that was done by the entire team to support them in that. So, it was, it was fun to see kids, I mean, literally bouncing in front of me wanting to get into their classrooms, but to see staff feel empowered and supported in making sure that they were welcoming kids in an appropriate way. So, it was cool to see the behind-the-scenes piece for some of our staff members who are on that front line of doing the work, so thank you to you and your teams and all of them for being that welcoming face for those first 25 minutes.
Thank you. You know, one of the hallmarks of starting an elementary school year is kindergarteners crying in the hall like we expect it, we're ready for it. Didn't happen. I don't think it happened anywhere because they, first of all, they're six months older, there's probably something to that, but they also, they knew their teacher. They'd been connecting with their teacher online for nine months, and so, you know, it was like, yeah, obviously, but they, knowing they're, seeing them coming in, they were just so excited, that fear of school wasn't there, which was kind of neat to see.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I too want to thank you for recognizing everybody that was a part of this extraordinarily successful return to school, although what I, you and I just talked about, an epiphany for me when this happened was that I went to six different schools, not on the day back, but the day afterwards, and I went to several kindergarten classes, and by the end of the day, I thought, boy, they got to go back to school, that's great, and my wife said, "They'd never been to school." You know, this was their first day that they were ever at school because they were in kindergarten, and so they hadn't got to start, and so that, I bookmarked that, but the, not only the enthusiasm, but the gratitude from all of the principals that I talked to, they were all thankful, appreciative of what had happened and how smoothly things had gone after this very, very long wait, and so, thank you, Brian, for your remarks, and we, it's really something to celebrate as a district that we did this. A lot of other places did not have the same easy time. I think it's largely attributable to the trust that this community has in its school district, and we're looking forward to the next steps now. And the last thing I want to say is that Dylan Bernstein was a little too modest. He didn't tell you that he still is on the waitlist at Columbia, which I'm interested in because that's my alma mater, but he also wants to study modern European history, and he thinks he may have some politics in his future, so he told us a lot about Wilson, but that's a little bit more about him, and we're looking forward to hearing good things. The last thing he told me was that I'm good friends with his grandparents, and I thought, well, that's a bummer. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Miller.
So, I'm going to tease Dylan a little bit. Dylan, you were holding out. You got to tell us everything, man. That's pretty good news, man. Second, I just wanted to congratulate Brian and his team. I got to visit Lafayette, and I think the biggest concern that, or I'm going to make an assumption here, that a lot of our parents may have felt, was the coming on the campus and the leaving of campus, because that's when you see the most people, and so I got to see both sides of that process, and for lack of a better term, it was a well-oiled machine at Lafayette. If you know the neighborhood, it can be cumbersome to say the least, but it was fantastic to see in less than 15 minutes, they had all the kids in the classroom in less than 15 minutes, everybody had received their lunch and was leaving the campus, and so I know that that is more than just the work that was done on a campus level, which I'm sure that they deserve a lot of the credit. It also is accredited to you and your team for all of the planning that goes into setting up those protocols, and so, thank you.
Well, I have a great team, and she's going to really not be happy for me saying this, but Kim Weber is a director in our office, along with Dr. Domeno Myers-Miller, but Kim has been on a Health and Safety Committee representing the elementary level since probably last May, and has just done some amazing coordination. Probably everyone in this room has been on a text or a phone call with Kim in the last year to coordinate all of that, so I'm going to defer much of that credit to her and some of the work that she's done, but thank you.
Okay, well, before we move on, I just want to join my colleagues in thanking you and your team and all the other teams that made this possible, and I too appreciate the fact that the focus is on all the kids and not just the kids returning, and I appreciate those principals that have gone out of their way to make sure that we have these cohesive communities, so thank you for all that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda. I believe we only have one, okay?
My name is Mariana Salgado, a Parks Commissioner and parent of two, and I'd like to speak on item 22, reopening, and 26, talp addendum. First, I'd like to thank- First, I'd like to thank every recade, cafeteria, maintenance and onsite staff member for helping our students get back on campus. To our teachers, your love for our children and efforts to make this a seamless transition is appreciated, even though I'm certain, much like parents, there were a number of uncertainties and hiccups along the way. Thank you. Last December, Long Beach Post uncovered approximately 7,000 students used the stop and go meals. Less than 10% of our close to 71,000 students who aren't free or reduced lunch were being fed. It further uncovered, based on parent responses for reopening, Long Beach Elementary Schools with a higher percentage of low-income students and a higher percentage of non-white students have fewer kids returning to in-person instruction. For example, Lowell is the LBUSD elementary school with the highest percentage of students signed up to return to class at about 74%. Lincoln Elementary, where 88% of the students come from low-income families, only 24% are returning to class. Our most affluent students are in person and being provided a lunch every day. It baffles me why the school district is providing lunch to our most affluent students who are more than likely not in need of lunch. Over the summer, LBUSD provided stipends for low-income households and asked with the windfall of over $300 million, you return to helping our kids remain fed at home. More than half of our student body, particularly low-income students, remain at home, virtually learning and should be prioritized on nutritional support with stipends. It is these types of decisions that puzzle me where the priority is. We should be prioritizing our most vulnerable and students in need. Separately, I will continue to raise the concern of our technology access and tools. Talb's addendum being reviewed today highlights an item regarding technology. In the addendum, it states, and quote, "Classroom will be provided with a charging station and available backup Chromebooks for students experiencing technical issues with their device will be distributed among classrooms." There's no mention of concern over technology, resource or tools for virtual instruction. Are in-person students being prioritized for the limited number of Chromebooks our district has? Where are the virtual students' technical challenge addressed? Why is the entire list in the addendum only addressed in-person teacher concerns and not one addresses online instruction? Not one request over technology for teachers to ensure there's equity in instruction? Not one request over the need and technical assistance for teachers and students in the virtual classroom? Over the school year, I've seen teachers fundraise for document readers, headsets, and personally, my oldest has switched Chromebooks four times and went through three headsets. These issues continue to plague our students. These issues haven't gone away and ask you all to prioritize the instruction of distant learners who are falling further behind academically. What tools and resources do students and teachers need to support virtual learning? Thank you.
Okay, that was the only one on items listed on the agenda, so next we will go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Sister Celeste Treyhan. I work at St. Mary Medical Center here in Long Beach and I also live in Long Beach. I'd like to address the topic regarding the on-agenda item of the potential sale of seven LBUSD properties. The link housing and other organizations which repurpose or build.
Hello, my name is Constance Rux and this is for open comment, not an agenda item. Hello and good afternoon. I'm calling today regarding the decision to start charging paraprofessionals for insurance benefits. I am an IA special in Catalina Island. My husband is employed full-time on the island and I work six hours a day at Avalon Schools. We have three children and we live in low-income housing on the island. As you know, housing here is very hard to come by, which is why you have a hard time staffing here and getting full-time, full-time employees here on the island. Prior to my employment at LBUSD, I was a full-time pre-K teacher and one of the reasons I made the decision to switch to LB, excuse me, I'm on my break right now, I'm outdoors and it's a little noisy, to LBUSD and also accept less hours is due to receiving benefits. I have a medical disorder which requires several medications and weekly therapy. Without insurance, I cannot afford the medical services I need. I know the board is looking to give paraprofessionals a raise instead. The raise will not compensate for the added burden unto my family and loss of my medical insurance. Kaiser and Aetna are the choices that we have. Kaiser costs substantially less under the proposed plan, however Kaiser does not cover Catalina Island. The monthly cost for my husband and I to remain with the insurance company that's accepted on the island and not revert to a government program would be too much for our family. Our oldest child is also autistic and requires weekly therapy. Our daughter, our oldest daughter requires asthma medication. A raise will push us into a new income bracket which would change their insurance options as well. The rates proposed would not compensate my family equally to our loss of medical care. Adding on that we are now open and so happily with our students again does not come without risks. Please reconsider this decision and how it will impact families, especially at a time when we are all globally realizing the importance of healthcare and mental well-being. Long Beach is leading the way in California as this steps and this pandemic is coming hopefully to a close. Let's continue to do so and not begin sliding back now that we have, we have promoted and prioritized the importance of health and well-being to our students and our families. Let's continue that for our staff as well. The PR on this would not look good right now to cut back on insurance considering the current pandemic and considering how Long Beach and the mayor, Mr. Garcia, has promoted so much of saying that health and well-being is good and getting the vaccinations first and things like that, to cut insurance right now would just not be, be the way to go. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to me and most respectfully, thank you for, for your continued consideration and all that you do. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Therese Morrison. I work at Avalon School, K through 12, in Avalon, California. I am calling to make my comment about the proposed changes for classified employees on their medical insurance. The new changes to our medical insurance is not fair to the classified staff living in Avalon. Out of three options, we only qualify for one. We do not qualify for Kaiser because of logistics. Our local clinic and hospital does not accept HMO, so the only choice we have is Aetna PPO, which is what we have now. The proposed change will mean I will have to pay for employee plus one, $561 a month. To go from five, zero to $561 will be a hardship for us with the cost of living in Avalon already so high. And to have to go to the mainland for every single medical crisis would also be a hardship. Please hear our concerns and consider them to help the fight against this change. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lydia Sanchez, I'm from Avalon and this is a non-agenda item and my comment is about our health benefits, that we received a letter, classified received a letter on the 10th and, which was a Saturday, and we are faced with having to pay health benefits. The district talks about parity and equality, but fails to do as they say. Teachers work six hours a day and commute from the mainland to the island just as well as classified staff do, but they get paid for eight and because of that, they are not asked to pay for benefits. Rather, it's the ones that have been cut, such as classified, have been cut in hours, therefore we earn less and we're asked to pay more now out of our paycheck towards health insurance. Some of us here on the island are expected to pay, are looking at paying $500 a month for family because the island doesn't receive HMO or Kaiser. We're faced with having to pay a high cost, with having to decide between retirement or staying and working, with having to face seeking government healthcare because we cannot afford this healthcare. There's no parity or equality in this. IAs are asked to spend all this money on health benefits. I spend 12 hours a day away from my family, just like the teachers do, but the parity and equality has failed me. I ask that the district think about this. Where is the parity and equality that classified employees deserve, especially the IAs that we have been cut? And we walk hand in hand with the teachers. We are in the classrooms, we assist, we do everything that the teachers need, but yet parity and equality has failed us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Hutchins and I am calling regarding the medical benefits. They're trying to take away the classified benefits and we're in academics, so we need our benefits. The cost of living is high and the insurance that you guys want us to take over is not affordable. If we pay the insurance, we might be homeless. I would like for you guys to renegotiate the prices of the medical insurance as possible. Again, my name is Teresa Hutchins and I'm calling about the health benefits. Thank you, bye.
Hello, my name is Hector Jimenez and I'm a par educator based in Cabrillo High School and part of the adult community transition program. I'm concerned about, I'm not sure if it's a non-agenda or agenda item regarding our health benefits. Right now with COVID, we are very concerned, I'm very concerned with, with our health benefits being eliminated. This pandemic is not going anywhere. Our benefits are, are here to help us with our, any medical need if, if needed in the future. Financially, we as par educators can't afford to pay for private house insurance. Our total yearly income will not cover the monthly charges. Cost of living is very high here in, in California. We as par educators are vital and essential workers. We are here to assist or teach us with our students' needs, especially our special education students. Please consider in renegotiating our health benefits. It's one less thing to worry about in our very hectic lives. Again, we can't afford to lose our health benefits. Thank you for your time and please consider renegotiating our health benefits. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Baker and staff. I am providing public comment for a non-agenda item requesting that LBUSD hire more black teachers, black administrators and black staff for each school site. As a concerned parent, it breaks my heart to hear numerous stories from other black parents about their child not succeeding in their school, whether it is the challenges black children face at Patrick Henry, a dual-language emergent school, or the passive-aggressive comments from a teacher that assumes because your child is bright, he or she is probably cheating on their work. It is unfair to our students, especially our black students who have so much potential, but the education system fails them. A recent article in The Times states that if you want to support black students, then you must invest in black teachers. The article further states that black students who have even won black teacher during the elementary school years are more likely to graduate high school and consider college. Black students with black teachers experience less discipline and fewer office visits, a crucial break in the school-to-prison pipeline. Therefore, I am demanding systemic changes so that our black students succeed, thrive and achieve their full potential. Do better, Long Beach Board of Education. Thank you. Dr. Tavari, parent and LB, BLM Long Beach member.
This is a non-agenda item regarding health benefits. I am a classified employee and I wish to remain anonymous. I work at elementary school and I wanted to address how I said the health benefits. Currently, we're asked to pay a certain percentage for next school year. However, the cost of living here in California is between 30 to let's say $35. When we're taking that part of our salary that we earn, it's quite a bit. How are we supposed to afford life and live? And yet, Jill Baker just got a hefty salary and also we just got extra money for starting in the school district earlier. So I feel that more and more you're taking away benefits from classified employees. Like other districts, they're giving their employees full health benefits and, you know, supplementary benefits right now during COVID, $5 hazardous pay. Also, they get more than 10 days if they get COVID. So this is something that needs to be addressed, you know, everybody else is covered for health benefits, but our rights for health benefits, they're, they're being taken slowly as it is, you know, the district doesn't hire full-time employees because of the health benefits, because then it's more that you would have to pay. So how do we find a solution here? I don't think this is right, because you know, some people may end up having to get a second job or they might lose their home. And how is it that a six-hour employee and up, between seven, they're considered part-time? According to the IRS, they're considered full-time employees, 30 hours or more as well, even though under California law it's different. So I think this is something big that needs to be brought up to your attention and needs to be revoked on.
Tony Rayo-Saranga, 90806, and speaking of items not listed, I want to comment on equity policy, but since I have no idea what it is or will be, I choose to comment on items not listed on the agenda. After a week of obsessing on the Chauvin trial and the recent shooting of Dante Wright, I have pondered extensively over what a fair and equitable world would look like. It is with that lens that I present my comments. A district that is the largest employer in the city and the second-largest school district in the county has a responsibility to work towards fairness and equitable services not only to the families and students it serves, but also the, the community in which it is located. Equity and fairness should be woven into the very core of this institution, which can result in significant changes even when you're up against LBUSD's racist history, more often than not slow to change and limited by a very prescriptive ed code. In closed session, student discipline matters are discussed. Has the district studied why these students often tend to be overrepresented by black, brown, Pacific Islanders and students who are disabled emotionally, physically or mentally? Parents notice. Has the district, and if so, what is being done, especially now that there appears to be a clear path to full-time school in the fall? Implicit bias training for staff and teachers should be a starting point, but by no means the only thing you do. Has any study on school of choice been done to determine how and where poor, underachieving students of color are placed and are approved for their school of choice as opposed to high-achieving students who often get placed in better Eastside schools even without asking? When we choose a school, when we close a school, is an impact study done to see if the effects of closing a school or program on students and their families, especially in high-need areas, and what those effects are? We know that some people in the district benefit from the contracts and purchasing agreements that are approved at every meeting, but how many Long Beach businesses, minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses are given the opportunity to bid and ultimately chosen to partake in the tens of millions of dollars that are approved at every meeting? Were deciding on the distribution of A through G classes are Cabrillo and Jordan given the same number of choices as the high-achieving Eastside high schools? College recruiters have known the dirty little secret for some time that high schools with high number of students of color in low-income areas are not able to enroll in A through G classes because they fill up quickly or don't exist to make it mathematically impossible for all students in those schools who want to take the classes to take them. And let's not forget the tremendous teaching gap for African-American students. This was a front and center concern for the community, Black Lives Matter and parents when I ran for school board, yet nothing has been discussed or done as far as I could tell. I can go on and on. Equity and fairness are not limited to a policy or a program. It should be, it should be at the very core of who we are as a district. I look forward to discussing these issues with my board representative and hearing what all members of the board plan to do about putting equity and fairness front and center at LBUSD. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nancy Valencia. I'm calling on behalf of the school board workshop that just took place several weeks ago. I was very appalled at the 20,000 students that have received grades of those, 3,700 did not receive a D or an F in a class during the last school year. That's very appalling to me. There are many factors that could contribute to students receiving a D or an S. However, let's not forget some of the unique challenges that a large portion of the students have faced while learning remotely in the pandemic. Many students live in dense neighborhoods in multi-generational households that have small living spaces that are poorly equipped to support remote learning. These remote learners also do not have access to the green outdoor spaces that provide them with opportunities to recharge. Many of the older students also take on childcare responsibilities, a traditional parenting role due to their parents working as essential workers during the pandemic. When these parents do have the opportunity to When these parents do have the opportunity to support their children academically, they're faced with numerous obstacles, including limited computer literacy, poor internet infrastructure and difficulties communicating with teachers and school staff. As children begin to return to school, the district needs to acknowledge and prepare to address the trauma that students have faced over the last year. Provide counselors, teachers and support staff with the tools necessary to address the mental health issues that students will bring when they re-enter school. Keep counselors a priority. Allow them time to focus on the emotional and social wellbeing of the students. Reconsider grading and provide teachers professional development time to reevaluate and adapt curriculum to meet the needs of these students. Please do not miss this opportunity to support Long Beach Unified School District students. Thank you.
Jereline Tatum, non-agenda item. My name is Jereline Tatum. I currently have a first grader and tenth grader enrolled in LBUSD schools. For nearly three years, I have participated with a group of LBUSD parents and community stakeholders. We are informally referred to as the LCAP Community Group. This group is currently made up of LBUSD parents, community stakeholders, the Children's Defense Fund California, public advocates, Latinos in Action and Black Lives Matter California. The LCAP Community Group was originally formed to plan and implement the LCAP Community Forums that were called for in the 2018 settlement agreement between CDF California, Latinos in Action and several LBUSD parents. Since fall of 2018, we have collaborated with the district to plan and deliver five community forums to engage parents and community around LBUSD's local control accountability plan. One of the outcomes of the forum is to gather input from parents and how they would like their students' needs met via the LCAP. I share all of this because I would like to make the request of board members and staff. As you review this year's LCAP, please keep the LCAP Community Groups 2021, 2022 recommendations in mind. Are they included? Where can they be added? Please remember that these recommendations are a compilation of years of community input paired with district data. I also want to thank the board members and staff that have met with us and have given us an opportunity to present the recommendations to you directly. On April 24th, in collaboration with the district, we'll be hosting our sixth community forum. It will be held virtually. We hope to see all of our board members there. Also to parents and educators that are listening, please keep an eye on your email. The district will be sending out registration information within the next day. Although the formation of the LCAP group and collaboration between the community and district originally seemed like more of an obligation and formality, it now feels like a partnership. I have personally observed the development as an authentic relationship between LBUSD management, LBUSD staff and community. I hope that after the completion of the sixth forum, the district will continue to hold space for this relationship and continue to invest time and staff to work directly with community to deliver ongoing forums and events to engage and educate the LBUSD community. Lastly, although our forums were our initial goal, our advocacy has expanded to address the educational needs of our respective school communities. And FYI, we are working on that fancy new name for our group. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, soy un padre con hijos en el LBUSD y estoy llamando para pedirle al distrito que prepare suficiente personal en las escuelas para abordar los problemas de salud mental que traerán los estudiantes que estuvieron durante mucho tiempo tomando educación en línea. Suficiente personal para que esos, ah, esos problemas de salud mental no se tomen como de comportamiento y se use una disciplina que será muy dura con los estudiantes.
Doctor Baker, is there any way to pause to get trans, interpretation? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
tomando su, su educación. Ah, estos estudiantes van a traer muchos problemas como de, ah, no querer hablar, como de no querer socializar, o a la mejor van a estar muy iterativos, van a, van a este, tener problemas al querer comunicarse o al, al no poder comunicarse. Y sobre todo los alumnos con educación especial que ahora ya están regresando o que ya regresaron a las clases y que también sufrieron un retroceso y que no se les castigue con Fs, ah, porque no va a ser, ah, muy justo que se les den Fs cuando no, perdón, cuando no han tenido acceso a su educación en una forma tradicional y que realmente la pueden aprovechar. También para los padres que haya suficientes, ah, recursos para que puedan ayudar a sus hijos que van a estar enfrentando esos problemas, eh, que van a estar incluso resentiendo el hecho de recibir Fs cuando la mayoría de las veces eran estudiantes que durante la educación en persona recibían grados, recibían, ah, eh, resultados de sus exámenes de ochenta, noventa, cerca de cien por ciento y que durante la educación en línea bajaron sus grados bajo su aprovechamiento en una manera muy drástica. También que tomen en cuenta que todo eso les va a afectar en el futuro. Si les dan una F o una D ahora, la van a cargar en su récord y les va a afectar para lo que sería el colegio, para lo que sería la universidad. Entonces sí me gustaría que tomaran en cuenta eso cuando están haciendo sus decisiones de cómo van a dar los grados a los estudiantes. También que las escuelas tengan, eh, el per, que el personal en las escuelas tenga la educación, el entrenamiento para poder entender los problemas que esos niños, ah, van a traer. Porque...
This is a non-agenda item regarding our healthcare benefits. My name is Judy Quonstrom and I'm in Avalon School. Good afternoon, I'm a parent in LBUSD and calling to ask the district to be prepared... Oh, sorry. Good afternoon, I am a parent in LBUSD. I am calling to ask the district to be prepared with enough staff at the schools to take on the mental health problems that the students that have been on virtual learning will have. Also enough staff so that the mental health problems are not seen as behaviors where harsh discipline will be used and given to students because that would affect their education. These students will come back with a lot of difficulties, like not being able to communicate, not want to socialize, or maybe they will be hyperactive or have problems communicating or not being able to communicate. Especially special ed students that will be back or are going to return, that are already back or are going to return because they have not had the opportunity to have access, to have access to their education in the traditional manner. To not give them Fs because the students suffered a regression. It's not fair that they get Fs when they have not been able to have access to go to school in a, in a traditional way and this will, or take benefit of their education. Also, to have help for parents that will confront those problems with their children. There should be enough resources because they will feel the resentment when they are getting Fs when they are normally used to getting As and A's in the test when they were in person and that during online learning, their performance went down. Also, to keep in mind that this will affect their grades. Um, if they get Ds or Fs, it will stay in their record and it will affect them when they go to college or the university. So please keep that in mind when deciding how grades will be given. Also because, also please have staffs at the schools that are trained, that are educated, that have qualifications so that they understand the problems that these students will have upon returning.
Catalina Island, I'm concerned that we're classified staff who earn way less than the teachers are being targeted. Being a resident of Catalina, I have to have the Aetna PPO, so I may use the Catalina Island Medical Center facilities. That will take over six hundred dollars of my paycheck a month, which will leave me, won't leave me enough to cover my rent. I was hoping to continue working, but this might force me to retire. I'm hoping something may be done. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes the public testimony, uh, part of the meeting. Next, next we have staff report, school reopening update. I think Dr. Lund will be leading us off with that one.
Good evening. So I'm going to start off, I'll start off with a video that we put together, kind of highlighting our work this week with our preparations for our return next week. So we'll start off with that. So it's been a busy week. As Mr. Moskovitz alluded to, that time, that buildup towards the reopening is really the most pressing time. The myriad of questions, all the, the hours and hours of preparation. I'd like to thank our teams that sent in some video, video clips for this brief video from Avalon, Hughes, Marshall, Mir, Newcomb, Rogers, Stanford and Stevens. Mr. Moskovitz alluded to the fact that this cannot happen alone, that there's an incredible support team of many, many departments to make all this work happen. Those departments continue to support our middle and high schools this week with those final preparations, the delivery of final PPE equipments, of other preparations for classroom equipment, including headsets for teachers to use with projection devices, the additional preparations around cafeteria services and finalizing those, uh, those meal services for next week. Our schools obviously continue to offer meals at all of our sites, our elementary sites. Both of our hybrid and our virtual students have access to meals at those elementary sites. For next week, at middle school, our hybrid students will obviously eat on-site two days a week when they are on-site. On the three days a week that they are off-site, they will pick, be able to pick up meals from any one of our elementary sites. Our virtual students will be able to pick up meals five days a week from any one of those elementary sites. So please know that lunch service continues for all of our students K through twelve at our elementary sites. The, this week has been obviously a lot of final preparation. We welcomed back our teachers, as you saw in the video, on Monday. We held two asynchronous days this week, which were site-selected to basically give teachers additional time to help prepare classrooms this week. The sites selected their own asynchronous days. You might find that some of them are actually at the end of the week this week. Many had them earlier yesterday and today, or on Monday as a kind of a transition for teachers coming back. Our students generally are, most of our students are either on an AB schedule as what we had originally planned for, or on essentially a hybrid A, virtual B schedule. So fourteen of our sites are following that schedule, meaning that they have students in-person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And on Wednesdays and Fridays, they have their virtual students. So in most of our schools, a teacher's schedule follows that structure. All their students together on Monday, in-person students Tuesday and Thursday, virtual students Wednesday and Friday. We do have four sites that are following a Wednesday-Friday hybrid model. And that was to accommodate transportation needs, to make sure that we weren't overloading transportation just on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that we could balance that out. The final preparations of classrooms and schools are happening this week. Obviously, all the desks have been set up for social distancing within those classrooms, which varies site to site. You could have as few as probably thirteen, fourteen desks in a classroom and probably on the high end, closer to twenty-five. The distancing requirements were dictated by the students, the number of students coming back into that hybrid model. So in those settings, the students are still spaced six feet apart, back to back, and in some cases, four feet apart, side to side. The CDC actually permits us to go to a three-by-three spacing. We decided on a greater spacing for our transition back with the minimum being four feet by six feet, just so you know. The orientations that are also occurring this week, our sixth graders have never been on our campuses. So many sites welcome back students this week in orientations, or as you saw, saw in Rogers' case on Friday, or this weekend. So that is a common practice across our middle and high schools this week to make sure that our students get back into school and at least experience what it looks like to be on campus, learn where their classrooms are, that sort of like first-day apprehension for a sixth grader prior to the start next week. So it's obviously an incredibly busy time. We have roughly half of our students coming back in person, half of our students staying virtual, and about four hundred students that chose to stay in our independent study program. So I'm open to any questions that you may have about our return from middle school.
Dr. Benitez?
I apologize, but I have the glare from the window hitting me right in the eyes, so. Dr. Lund, did we experience any change from students and our families first choosing the online or continuing online versus changing to hybrid from what we were initially anticipated? Given that there's this buzz, right, about students returning? Can you talk a little bit about?
Yeah, you may recall from our summer survey, we had roughly sixty percent of our students coming back. Our final numbers are closer to fifty percent.
Okay.
That varies across our district. At the low end, thirty-two percent, thirty-five percent. And that actually varies across the district geographically. So Mir and Stevens on the west side are at about that range. In the north side, Powell and Hamilton fall into that range. And then closer to the east side, Jefferson actually falls into that range. So really a swath across our district that falls at the lower end. At the higher end, you do have a predominant, roughly sixty percent plus at Newcomb, Stanford, Rogers, but also Avalon. Avalon actually came in at over sixty percent as well of their students coming back in person. And then the rest of the schools kind of fall between forty and that sixty percent. Anywhere from Tinter on the east side, Marshall at fifty percent, Hughes at fifty percent, Nelson, Washington, close to fifty percent. So really you do have a, a broad range across our district with slightly more students on the east side.
Thank you. And then related to that, can you talk a little bit about the work that we're doing supporting students in that transition, either back at hybrid and/or as Mr. Moskovitz started off today, sort of examples of things that we're doing to continue supporting students?
Yeah, I mean, our model is really set up to really maintain that connection with the classroom teacher in both environments. All students stay together with their teacher in their same classes every Monday. So whether you decided to come back in person or decided to stay virtual, every Monday you are with your class as you've always been since the day, since day one. So I think that's a huge part of just staying connected regardless of the setting that you chose. Beyond that, obviously orientation set up for students that are returning. The adjustment for both groups is really going to be asynchronous days in both settings. So in both settings, students will have asynchronous days, two days a week, either Tuesday, Thursday or Wednesday, Friday. So that will be an adjustment for students. I imagine for many of them, it'll be a positive adjustment. You know, they tend to like the asynchronous days and the opportunity to use that time a little bit more flexibly.
I did have a question about the reopening of the middle schools in regards to asymptomatic screening. Now, I know from an anecdotal sense, now this is not any factual statistical information I'm sharing, but once again, I'm just going to use my relationships from some of the principals. They were quite appreciative of the asymptomatic screening for the elementary schools because there were a number of students that ended up testing positive. And that level of protection was something that they looked at as beneficial. And so I'm just curious to hear if we have any plans or what we plan to do in regards to just screening of the?
Yeah, given our current tier level within the county, we're no longer required to do any asymptomatic testing. As a matter of fact, As a matter of fact, the city health department doesn't recommend it. So I think the other, basically relying on the safety precautions that we've put into place to really mitigate any of those concerns. So the spacing of students within classrooms, the additional ventilation systems that we put into classrooms, the, obviously, the spacing that we have out at lunch, the second and third lunches that we've provided across our school sites. The number of students eating lunch in most of our sites ranged between 100 and 200 students on the yard at a time, spaced out across really yards that normally accommodated 1,000 students. So the spacing, I think, is a big part of that. Many of our schools looked at traffic patterns within the school site to set up one-way hallways. That's been part of the videos that they've rolled out this week to families and the communication that they've sent out. So obviously, the mask is a big part of that, and the requirement of masks within the classrooms. So I think when you take all those factors combined, it's really using those recommendations from the CDC as our primary guide to really mitigate any concerns around any spread. Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, just to follow up on that same note, I think that's, so we're doing everything we can within the guidelines that we have and the recommendations to keep kids and families safe, but I would say that it is incumbent on our families to continue to have good practices in their health, to not take unnecessary risks. Please do not send your students to school if they have any symptoms, if, you know, get yourself and your kids tested if you're experiencing symptoms or think that you've been exposed, because the best way we can protect our school environments is for our families to make really good health decisions, and then to be, you know, upfront and honest about what's going on with their health as we return some students to school. So while we're not, it's not advised, and it's counter, it's counter to the health department's recommendations on testing, we really are reaching out to our community to maintain best practices, to make good decisions, to take care of their own health and their testing needs as appropriate. So just throwing that out there, that we're not testing, but we need folks to really be on their best behavior, even though it is beautiful outside, and the tendency to want to be together seems really high right now, but really counting on our school, on our community to help keep our schools healthy, because we're doing everything we can.
Yes, thank you for that. I think that screening, obviously, that students engage in in the morning, that parents have completed, but also at the middle and high school level, we can screen students directly with those responses, so that's a big part of our process. In addition to, obviously, the hand sanitizing coming into classrooms, the cleaning of desks between classrooms, the cleaning of equipment between classrooms or between use at PE. We've set up additional hand-washing stations for use on the yard during lunch and during PE, so that those are available as additional means to really mitigate any spread. Really relying on those, you know, cleaning, disinfecting strategies that we've become so accustomed to within this time.
And then also, I would add, the addition of the care rooms is helpful in case a child develops symptoms later on in the day, or something of that nature, that we have a facility and a place where they can go and be separated so that that spread is minimized.
All right. If there are no further questions, I'll turn it over to Dr. Camerino.
Thank you, Dr. Lund.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Our next video for our high schools, just look at it in three buckets. In our support for reopening of schools, the day the elementary students came back, our high schools went and supported the elementary students' returns, that's one portion. Our teachers returning on Monday is the second portion of the video. And the last portion are the tremendous amounts of supports and videos that we all know is happening at Wilson and other schools on their websites. And we would answer a lot of your questions as to what do students do when they're going to the restroom, or going to lunch, or coming into the school, or leaving classrooms. All of our schools have done a phenomenal job of communicating that. So again, the three buckets of our video will have supporting elementary schools when the students returned, thank you to our high schools who sent staff out there to support, returning of teachers on Monday, and then the last piece is our, some of our videos that we kind of put a montage of them together. So Mr. Itzen, ready to go.
When entering or exiting buildings on campus, be sure to look for the signs on the doors indicating the direction of traffic in or out.
Thank you to Renaissance for that little dramatic moment of a little fun of, we got this. So it was really cute that the students did that for us. And I can't even reiterate everything that Mr. Moskovitz has said, Dr. Lund, and everything that has been shared already, just the gratitude and the hard work of thinking about March 13th of 2020 to where we are today, and bringing our folks together, our classified staff, our certificated staff at our sites, all of our students, ASB groups that have, you know, welcomed from our athletes to our students to supporting, to sending our mascots over to the elementary schools, just making it really positive and lively for our students, not just who are returning at school, but also all the care that we've put into at the high school level for our students who are still going to be zooming in from at home, providing that support to them also. Again, watching those videos online, you'll see, excuse me, you'll see that our schools have really been purposeful in ensuring that all of our students are still part of our school, our community, they're still part of the team, and we are happy to have them virtually and in person. Sorry. Also want to recognize, especially as always, our PTSA groups, who are always there, you know, even prior to a pandemic, always greeting at the table, smiling and appreciating all the work that our teachers bring, and the enthusiasm of starting a new school year. So it's really interesting to start football so late this school year, but also feels like we're starting school again, being in person, so exciting. And thank you to PTSA groups and parent groups that have been out there to support us, as always, and great to see our students in many aspects that we have there. So thank you for all the food items and the gifts. Just a quick update, too. Again, I really do invite you to look at all the websites of our high schools to see all the work that they've been doing, and continuing to send social media, as you know, really big for our students. We've done a lot of campaigning there, that we've gotten a lot of these pictures from that. Our last football game is this Friday. We have Link Crew, as Dr. Lund had mentioned, which is ninth-grade orientation. Some have happened during the week already. This Saturday, we have Cabrillo and Sato. The following Saturday, we will have Lakewood and Polly, and McBride will have it on April 20th. So those Link Crew moments with our students, as Dr. Lund had mentioned, our freshmen have not been on our campuses yet, so this will be the first time they get a chance to be there with their Link Crew leaders, as well as the staff that's going to be there with them. So if you're open on a couple Saturdays, we can send you those items. They're on the website, too, for the schools. Cabrillo and Sato this Saturday, Lakewood and Polly the following Saturday for Link Crew. So I am open to questions.
Dr. Benitez?
Dr. Camerino, thank you. And I actually should have asked Dr. Lund this question as well, so if you want to jump in, Dr. Lund. What are you hearing from sort of two areas? One is our school site staff in terms of, I'm going to try to phrase this in a non-threatening way, concerns or issues that there still may have needs around? And then from students and parents and families, I think it's going to be a little bit differently, right? Because some students have already been participating in sports. They've been on campus. So what are you hearing from parents in terms of what they're expressing in terms of concerns?
Yeah, I did want to share, not necessarily a concern, but I think something that's been coming up, that I applaud our schools for taking on. As head counselors and counselors and our administrators, as students decide the question you asked earlier, the momentum is really positive of our students returning, and we are, we have families who have been asking, well, since I chose online, can I still return in person? And that, yes. It won't be an immediate yes, you can come back tomorrow, but it'd be something that we're, as depending on the pathway and the classes and the number of students in each classroom, yes, we are very open to students asking for being able to be in-person as much as possible, too. So that is still open for that to work. The other concern I think that we may have is, is the, is just the, sorry, it's the screening of our students in the morning, the amount of students, and how we'll be able to work all that through. The appreciation from our high schools of being at the elementary sites to watch and get a feel of how it happened there is going to be the key piece. And the other, the other section will also be just the flow of students walking to and from during passing periods. Luckily for our block schedules, students only go maximum of three classes a day, some four, but most of our kids only go to three in a day. So really, the passing periods that happen in between, and lunch, just making sure that students are, you know, socially distanced. But for the most part, our kids have done a phenomenal job on that aspect.
Dr. Benitez, the only thing I would add would be, at our level, the biggest concern was really around keeping their teacher, keeping their schedules intact, similar to the elementary level, and just making sure that that was really accommodated. So once, I think, parents were reassured that their student's schedule in 98, 99% of the time, that the student's schedule would stay the same, that alleviated most of their concern. And the second was really just accommodating their preference, you know, that if they really wanted their child to stay home, that we could do so, and if they wanted their child to come back, that we could do so.
Mr. Miller?
Jay and I had a conversation about this already, and now I think it's even more pertinent in regards to the state's reopening plan of June 15th, in regards to what do we have planned to make this final couple of weeks for our seniors in particular special? When I think about my high school experience, I know we're here and we represent the academic component of what we consider success, but there's a big component of it that needs to be considered, which is just the nostalgia, just the experience. And they've had a COVID-378 days, I think it's been, and so I think that it's important for us to consider how we make that special, and knowing that the last day of school is timed right around the reopening of the state, though it's a tricky conversation, and I don't know necessarily, I don't know how we approach it. I do want to know what plans have we began to consider in regards to senior night, or graduation, or all of those kind of things.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So right now, we have currently asked our ASB directors, who just do amazing, have been doing amazing work since the class of 2020, of doing senior tributes for them every Friday night at 2020, which is 8:20, every evening, honoring the class of 2020, that whole, since March 13th to the end of the last day, and having those graduation parades. They've been doing, they've been just turning on the fly, right? Initially, we weren't even allowed to have graduation parades, and then we were allowed to within a few weeks, so they made things happen. Currently, we know that we are preparing for, if something happens, that we are able to have larger-scale graduations if possible. So that's not anything we're saying is guaranteed, but we are ensuring that we have at least pathway graduations at our schools. So you could potentially see some of our larger high schools have four to five to even six graduations, where we will have socially-distanced spectators, family members in the bleachers, outdoors, with our graduates there with their pathways. So that's what they've been preparing for as of this moment, ready for that. So the great thing is, A, there will be a graduation, B, just a matter of capacity is what we're kind of just working on. So we know that the last weeks of school, so everyone knows, we typically have always had the last day of school be a Thursday. This is a unique year in that the last day of school is on a Wednesday, so finals start officially on the Friday before the last week of school. So looking for something to potentially, having some graduation ceremonies multiple days from the Friday all the way through Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And then, and then from, from the district support piece, we are going to sponsor a senior event at all of our schools, so because we know that revenue has been short with students not being on campus, not having events, selling tickets to various, whether they're proms or dances, or sporting events, or plays or musicals, that we are going to help sponsor a senior event that the ASB directors have been working closely with, so that way, students have an opportunity to come back on campus for some type of a quasi-prom, outdoor senior picnic, you know, we just, it's a hybrid of a bunch of things, right? So socially-distanced in an open area outside to bring our seniors back together in a very celebratory way, besides graduation, too.
Dr. Camerino, you've also done an amazing job with your sports programs, and bringing back your sports programs for this last term, and then also the fact that seniors are coming back first next week, prior to any other grade level.
Dylan, of course, come on up.
Just in case anyone forgot, along with Cabrillo and Polly, next Saturday, Wilson is having its Link Crew freshman orientation. Just wanted to throw that in there.
Dylan, I looked at you and I knew, yes, I had it down right here. Sorry, forgot to mention that. Yes, Wilson also. Sorry, Ms. Fajar, she's going to, I'm in trouble with her now. I got to make it up to her.
Thank you, Dylan, for taking the initiative, but also want to thank you and your crew up there and various ASBs for demonstrating best practices. I know you said there's something to come, or maybe you don't demonstrate such good practices, but that...
He says it's in the video.
It's in the video. Not clipped here, but obviously, ASBs and student leaders across the campuses have been really active in trying to engage folks and teach best practices, so I just wanted to give a shout out to you and your team, your ASB team.
And also, let me make sure, sorry, President Craighead, also the multimedia team, who has always just been available since March 13th, from updates to soundbite, to, I'm sorry, the news bites that we have, to just these videos, just a support from them also. I know we have to always say thank you to them, because they've been a part of keeping everything alive and just widespread in the work that they've been doing, so kudos to the team here.
Thank you, Dr. Camerino, and sharing the love, and for all the work that's gone into what you've done, and Dr. Lund, you also. Is there any way you could put out that calendar of Link Crew events to the board, in case we're available on Saturdays, to just come and see that? I know it'll be heartwarming for us to be involved in student activities once again, and I know I speak for the board when we, you know, when I say that we hope that our current seniors will be able to celebrate in a way that hasn't been possible for a long time. Although, I must say that what we were able to do last year was incredible, the drive-through graduations, that type of thing. I even heard from a few people that they preferred the drive-through graduation to the typical Vet Stadium, 8,000-people event, but they were very good. So I know whatever we're able to do, it'll be done well. And also, I should mention last year, that district-wide graduation virtual event, very well done, very well done. Okay, so let's see, if we don't have any further, yes, Dylan? Okay, so, uh, let's see, if we don't have any further que- yes, Dylan. Well, you know what, I'm gonna have you come to the, um, podium there.
This is a little informal, but as a Link Crew commissioner, um, just saying, if any of you, uh, want to come to freshman orientation, I could think of no greater thing. Uh, I'm, we would love to see you because without you, none of this even happens. So frankly, having you would be the greatest honor.
Thank you.
Dylan, I am smiling so hard underneath this mask, man. You make me happy.
I will email the, uh, all the Link Crew events before we, this meeting is over. You'll have the dates.
Thank you very much. Yep, we're gonna wait on those details. Okay, uh, glasses on, we'll get down to business. Okay, business items, personnel, Mr. Miller.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. So I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. First, I'll start with the classified and exempt personnel. Appointments eighty-eight, leaves of absence twenty-seven, terminations one, resignations fifteen, retirements six, abolishments one, amendments five. Now with the certificated personnel, appointments two hundred and ten, in-service changes five, leaves of absence twenty-nine, release of temporary contract employees three, resignation seven, retirements twenty-three, and amendment five.
Move approval?
I actually had a question.
Second.
I think we need a second before...
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Come on, Mr. Miller.
It's actually, yeah, I was, I'm sorry to interrupt you, brother. Uh, this question was actually for, uh, Mr. Zaid here. I was hoping that he could provide just some informal analysis on, uh, personnel in regards to where we are and the amount of open positions in contrast to previous years.
Sure. So one of the, um, out of the report that's provided, one of the things that we really keep an eye on are the retirements, resignations and leaves of absences. And so for a certificated, um, leaves of absence, just to share where we are for the entire year, there have been a hundred and fifty-four. For resignations, to date, there have been thirty-four. And for retirements, to date, there have been ninety-seven. And that's for this year. And so we take a look at, at the numbers. Um, we take a look at this as it relates to hiring and we'll be having a wonderful recruitment night. I'm putting in a shameless plug for recruitment night on April twenty-first. Uh, but that will be virtual, but these numbers impact that. Um, all of the numbers are within their norms with the exception of leaves of absences. Leaves of ab- absences this year are significantly higher. But the reason they're higher is because we had the Families First COVID, uh, or Coronavirus Response Act that was in place and it expired on December thirtieth of this year. And then we also just put in place a supplemental, uh, paid leave, uh, which also gives those additional days and that's in place, um, until September thirtieth. And so those two leaves were not in place in prior years because they are specific to the coronavirus. And so as our employees take advantage of those benefits that were provided to them and those leaves, um, it impacts our numbers and that's why they're, they're slightly higher for those specific reasons.
So just to confirm, there are more openings, but that means that there's more opportunities within, uh, the district, correct?
Our retirements are up. They're up by about twenty percent and that will relate to some more opportunities. And so, uh, for those who are interested in, um, equity and excellence and fulfilling the mission of Long Beach Unified School District, whether you are watching this, uh, from one of our local, uh, places or other places or other states, uh, we want to welcome you to apply and to join us for our virtual night, absolutely, and thank you.
And that is called an alley-oop, my friend.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for that information, Mr. Zaid, so I can cross that off my announcement list. But I may just do it again, just for you. This is the time of year where there usually comes a report that catches my breath and makes me choke up a little. And this is one of those. So when you look at the decades, hundreds of years of service, multiple teachers in thirty, you know, thirty-seven years, thirty-two years, thirty-four years, twenty-nine years, twenty-eight years, um, how grateful I am for the professionalism and great work of these teachers over the decades who have impacted thousands and thousands of students. One particular shout out, and I know he was able to get announcement out, is Mr. Petrie is retiring. And so for those of us who, um, I'm sure you have experience with Mr. Petrie, I do. My, you know, my oldest is twenty-five. Uh, we love Mr. Petrie and he has been an incredible force for good and supporting the arts and really making the arts come alive for so many kids. So to all of these teachers, thank you, um, for your dedicated, hard work and especially to Mr. Petrie. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
Just to add another shout out, Board Member Kerr, to Principal Sawinski from Franklin Middle School, uh, as well. Uh, congratulations to all the retirees, uh, including Principal Sawinski. And then, um, I also wanted to, um, as Board Member Miller presented, we have an unusually high number of appointments. Uh, and, and this is because this is when our staffing for our Head Start and Educare also, um, uh, occur. So I, I want to, uh, thank and congratulate our appointments. Uh, as, as our community members know, um, we've had since last summer, uh, our youngest students, uh, in person. Uh, so I just wanted to give a, a special recognition to our appointments from Head Start and Educare uh, in their ongoing efforts to educate our youngest, uh, students.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. They have been in person this whole school year. And I will just add to that, um, shout out to Mr. Petrie. I, I can't imagine, um, you know, LBUSD without the band spectacular, without him coordinating the, uh, fourth and fifth grade field trips to the Long Beach Symphony. All these things, just I picture Mr. Petrie involved in all that. So we are, uh, honored to have him and his many years of service, you know, grace our district. Um, let's see, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Yes, if there was a motion.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, um, that passes five-zero. Instruction report.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Just, um, a, a question perhaps for our superintendent. I know that we had, uh, several school plans, um, that we're approving tonight. And, um, I know that it's been a challenge this last year, not just getting participation on our school site councils, um, but also, you know, supporting them because we haven't been meeting in person. I'm wondering if there's any plans or thoughts around building capacity in our school site councils moving forward, given this very challenging, uh, last year that we've had.
I don't have dates for you today. Mr. Tagorada's in the room, so I'm looking at him as well. But I know that that's part of, um, input through the LCAT process was also to bring back things like the School Site Council Parent Institute, and so we're looking at that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes. Um, just to acknowledge item number two, which is accepting and acknowledging the LA County Office of Education Plan, which is a compliance plan that the county has, has put out to ensure that there is equal access for all students across the entire county. If someone's interested in viewing that, is there a place that they can see that if they had questions on the details?
We can add that to our district website. So we can do that and then send information out, you know, to our families regarding that plan. So we'll work to put that on our website.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on, uh, Megan's comments here that in regards to, uh, the county's plan and we're talking about the expulsions of students, it's what is explained to me that this is kind of the baseline, uh, for the processes. But I do want us to continue to consider this baseline information when we're talking about our district and equity and inclusion as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five-zero. Uh, finance report A.
I would move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five-zero. Finance report B.
I would also move approval of finance report B.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in finance report B under the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code one oh nine-one and eighty-seven one hundred. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the P E's.
Any further discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition, that passes four-zero with one abstention. Business department report.
I would move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I actually don't see it listed as an information item, but, um, we quarterly get, uh, local hiring, uh, report. I know that Mr. Ryzen is going to give an update or give some information later on, uh, on a new business, uh, item. Um, but Mr. Ryzen, whether you want to talk about it now or, or later, um, in relation to our community workforce development, uh, agreement and what our local hiring, um, report, uh, means at this point moving forward? Do you, do you want to wait until you do the new business or, or, or share something about our quarterly report now? What do you think?
Okay, then we will save that part, uh, for new business. Any further discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five-zero. Purchasing and contracts report.
I would move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five-zero. Um, on to superintendent items. Uh, Dr. Baker?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I have a number of administrative assignments that I'd like to present. Um, this is the start of our phasing in, our phased approach to administrative assignment. So tonight's assignments take place because of retirements, because of vacancies, because of a reorganization in the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, and also due to changes in credentialing requirements. They also take place because we're looking at the initial assignments to think about how we will serve our students and our teachers as we come back into full, um, day schedule and think about the needs of our students. And so we're beginning a, a very strategic process to think about how to organize in service to our students and also how to, just to reimagine what students will need based on data. We've had a, um, a strong look at our data over the last several months and are really thinking about the needs of our students and our district's excellence and equity agenda. And so I'm pleased to report a number of, uh, a number of administrative appointments and assignments tonight. Starting at the non-level. The first is Tiammy LaBelle will move effective July first from Assistant to the Superintendent to Director District Initiatives and Accountability in the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development. From here forward, I'm going to say OCIPD. Carrie Wiley, who is an administrative assistant in OCIPD, becomes Program Administrator College and Career Readiness in OCIPD. Courtney Hole, currently a teacher on special assignment in the Elementary Office, becoming Program Specialist of Reading Recovery in OCIPD. Dr. Olga Gramont, a teacher on special assignment in OCIPD, becoming the Program Specialist Multilingual Coordinator in OCIPD. Alan Shepard, currently teacher on special assignment in OCIPD to Program Specialist History Ethnic Studies, OCIPD. Christine Whip, teacher on special assignment and teacher to Program Specialist Visual Performing Arts in OCIPD. Brett Wiley, a teacher on special assignment in OCIPD to Program Specialist Science Health, OCIPD. Cynthia Bader, Program Administrator Link Learning Career Pathways to Program Administrator Post-Secondary and Workforce Engagement in OCIPD. Carol Gutierrez Ortega, Program Administrator Counseling in the High School Office to Program Administrator College Readiness Course Management in OCIPD. Elizabeth Worsham, Principal Hart Elementary to Program Administrator Elementary Literacy Intervention in OCIPD. Renee Shipman, currently the Assistant Principal at, actually the Vice Principal at Wilson High School to Assistant Director Career Pathways, OCIPD. Kathleen Brown, currently Program Specialist Reading Recovery in the Elementary Office to Program Specialist Reading Recovery, OCIPD. And Martha Ensminger, Program Specialist in the Office of Equity Access in College and Career Readiness to Program Specialist English Learner Services in OCIPD. And lastly, a new hire to our district, Dr. Esther Death, coming to us as a principal in, um, a charter school in the Los Angeles area, coming unassigned as Assistant Principal. And these are all on the dates named in the board agenda, the effective dates. Most of them are the first day of the administrative year starting eight sixteen. Um, a couple of them are July first start date. So you will hear from us in the next several meetings as we continue to organize for our student needs and for our district initiative and also as we think about the needs of our school and make our administrative placements. So I make these recommendations.
I move approval?
Second.
Um, discussion? Okay, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes, uh, five-zero. And congratulations to all the aforementioned people.
I saw your eyes perk up at one of those.
Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business. None, there's no unfinished business. New business. Teachers Association of Long Beach, Addendum to Memorandum of Understanding School Opening Related to COVID-nineteen K-12. And should we have, um, okay, Mr. Rockenbach, talk about that before we make the motion? Or would that be part of the discussion? Either one, okay. We'll go ahead and have you, uh, address this one before we get into that.
Well, good evening, Board President Craighead, Board of Education Members and Superintendent Dr. Baker. Um, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and share some of the great work we've been doing with our labor partners at Taub. Um, over the past seven months, actually longer than that, since July first, we've been convening with our labor partners for over ninety-four hours to work on language, to vet, to develop an addendum as well as work on contract language to support the district's mission to provide all students an equity-driven education experience while also working to help with the challenges our teachers face in the ever-changing world and in particular, what we've been facing this past year. And what you have before you in our memorandum is changes that this group, in conjunction with the district team, worked hard to find the best way to help each other work through this process. But before we jump in briefly to go over it, I'd like to... But before we jump in briefly to go over it, I'd like to personally thank both the Taub team as well as the district team. I'd like to thank Corin Hickey, who was a negotiation lead for our Teachers Association of Long Beach, along with Chris Callapi, the Executive Director, Sybil Baldwin, Mark Ennin, Maria Garcia, John Kane, Jerry Morrison, Kevin Quinn, John Solomon, and Maritza Summers. Want to thank them for their time because, as you know, this is not something that people get paid extra for, and we did have a number of times where we spent many extra hours working through the process as we went through this. So we want to thank them for their efforts. I also want to thank our district team, the support we've received from Steve Andelson, from Dr. Brown, from Brian Cowie, who's a retiree in my former position as Director of Employee Relations. He helps keep us straight with our minutes. LaShel Diggs, Sophia Griffith, Nicole Houghton-Chiles, Dr. Lund, Mona Merlo, Dr. Elio Mendoza, Dr. Simon, Yumi Takahashi, Cindy Young, and David Zade. Without the efforts of these teams working together, and while it took us a long time, it really allowed us to have open, honest conversations and really hear where we're coming from and what we needed to make this work move forward. So within the addendum, you, what this is, is it's an addition to the MOU that was passed back in August. And as was mentioned, we had, did have the wrong date. Our previous MOU was not signed August 18th, 2021. We're not working in the future. It was signed previous summer. So this addendum is a companion document that addressed some of the key items that we felt were important to address as we bring students back, including revised safety protocols, continuing the practice of virtual meetings, adjunct duty, technology support for the classroom for both the teachers and the students, preparation time for teachers as they get ready to transition from distance learning to in-person learning, as well as working on protocols for visitors coming into campus to maintain campus safety. And lastly, I'd also like to share some good news and thank this group. As part of this work, we were also able to come to a tentative agreement in regards to contract negotiations for both 1920, excuse me, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 school years. Taub is currently in the process of working through their ratification process on that agreement with their membership. And once that voting process is complete, we'll be able to come back and share more information with you at a future session. But I also want to extend our thanks to the board for allowing this process to work its way through because I think it was very good. It was open, honest dialogue and really helped us know where each other is coming from and really develop a process that'll make it better for our students and our staff. So thank you and to take any questions people may have.
Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Steve. And I just want to echo your congratulatory remarks to the great job that our district team and the Taub negotiating team. It's a hard year to be negotiating, right? And in many cases, it's always hard, but this year presented extraordinary circumstances, right? So it's a heartfelt congratulations for the MOU. Hopefully that spirit of collaboration moves forward, and my expectation is that it will, because if we can get through this in the hardest of circumstances, then it's a good model, all right, to follow. You know, what I really want to highlight is the success of school districts isn't predicated just on good relationships with our labor partners, but that certainly does make a big difference, all right? Particularly as we highlighted so many times in our school board meetings with our district that's the largest employer in the city and a district that has, what, 3,400 teachers or so?
Somewhere around that number, yes.
And so these are, you know, our teachers, speech pathologists, nurses, librarians that have been working hard this whole time, right? And although some public sentiment is, you know, questioning what teachers have been doing, what staff has been doing, what district managers have been doing, we're a few weeks away from an entire academic year online and where we pivoted to now, as of two weeks ago, bringing students back on campus. So I'm feeling very hopeful, Steve, that even if the process was an arduous one and a lengthy one, that nonetheless, the process worked, right, and got us to where we needed to be.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And I think as our ongoing dialogue goes along with our CACA partners, we hope for the same type of work as we come to fruition for those talks. But you're absolutely right. I think that open line of communications is so critical, and the fact that we have such a broad representation on both teams, where the Taub team is made up of elementary, middle, and high school teachers, as well as our CDC Head Start representatives, and the same thing for our district team. I think it's helped that dialogue be much more fruitful and people really know what each other is going through. So that's definitely important.
Yeah, I just echo those comments. I'm so grateful for both teams being willing to engage on days probably when nobody wanted to engage with anything. It's been a tough year and a scary year at times, and I think part of the difficulty is we didn't know what we didn't know. And what we know here, sitting here in April, we didn't have a clue about in August or October or December. And that both teams continued to ask the questions and sit in the uncomfortable unknowing. I'm really grateful for the commitment to our students and to our school communities. So thank you to our teachers, to our partners, to the team here in the room who contributed to that work. I know that our students and families will benefit from the good, hard work that you all have done.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
I think that the three-legged stool of a successful school district is very competent of longstanding and committed administration, a board that is willing to hang in there and work hard to get things done. But equally as important is a relationship of trust between the school district and its employees. And you can watch across the nation even recently what lack of that trusting relationship has done to other districts. And so I think Long Beach has a lot to be proud of, and this agreement is the cherry on top of the pineapple upside-down cake of what we're doing. And congratulations, Steve, I think you did a marvelous job.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
I also just wanted to say congratulations. I think you need 100 hours to get a pilot's license, so let's just say you're almost there, brother, that you got your pilot's license and negotiations.
What benefit of a pilot's license, though? You kind of know what you're flying. I think that was the other challenge for our teams, is we were really flying in the unknown areas, and we often felt like we were hitting a moving target. And when you talk about that trust, I think that's the, was the most challenging part of the whole process is when we'd have to change things midstream, it really, it could challenge that trust level because it was so hard for us as things changed on a regular basis. So to credit to our Taub partners and credit to our district team and the support that we received through the board, we're grateful we've been able to get to where we are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done, everyone. But we do need a motion.
I move approval.
Discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five zero. Next on the agenda, we have the Temporary Addendum to Athletic Competition Extracurricular and Co-Curricular Activities Eligibility Requirement, and we will have Dr. Camarino speak to this item.
Dylan will once again help me out if I have any flaws or, I need a little extra help here, Dylan, so. Yes, so thank you so much. Prior to the pandemic, typically, a student is eligible for athletics or extracurricular activities based on the fact that they have a 2.0 GPA or higher. If a student does not receive a 2.0 during a grading period, typically a quarter, either first, second, third, or fourth quarter, the student for that time is on probation. So let's just say fall first semester, first quarter, student gets below a 2.0, student is on probation until the second quarter, which is the semester. If that student again becomes, has a lower than a 2.0 GPA, then the student would be academically ineligible to participate in athletics or extracurricular activities. What AB 908 is doing, it would suspend the ineligible portion of the students. Therefore, all of our students would be eligible, academically eligible, to participate in athletics or any extracurricular activities, and they would just be deemed as being on probation for the remainder of the 2020, 2020, 21 school year.
Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, I want to thank staff for bringing this item forward. This is one of those equity pieces where the rubber meets the road, that we don't always assume when we talk about sports, it's around equity. We've heard over and over again from our own staff, the number of Ds and Fs that our students have. Some of that, and a lot of that disproportionately impacting our lower-income students and students who have had to make some excruciating choices during the pandemic. And so what that means is then some of those students become ineligible for one of the things that brought them a lot of joy at school. And we know for some kids, athletics is that thing that makes them feel connected to their school community. So to have the pandemic disproportionately impacting health and grades of those students, we can look at some schools who have half of their students who may be ineligible because of the current requirements. So I want to thank you and staff for working hard on this. And so one of the things it says is that they have to apply for a waiver and meet with the school site's advisory committee. So what does that process look like? Because we know we have kids who want to play in a football game on Friday, potentially, or a sporting event tomorrow. So can you talk a little bit about what staff's done and how high schools are prepared to work with this?
So our high school offices have asked our administrators, our triads, counselors, administrators, and pathway lead teachers to ensure that they're meeting with the students and the families to, A, let them know it's a one-time, one-year availability for them to be, to participate. Second, to, and the most important piece is to make sure that we are providing the supports for the students to stay on track for A through G and graduation. So that's really essential and key. So it's an opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation with our students that need that extra support to understand why. And again, helping them also map out what summer school they may need or other interventions that the students might be participating in. Some of our students are already participating in Saturday school supports and after-school supports virtually right now, and some of them are starting to come in person.
So someone who hears this tonight, maybe for the first time, hasn't gotten news on their site, can reach out to their athletic director or to their school administration to make sure that they can go through the process as quickly as they can?
Our sites, yes, have been contacted about it earlier. Our athletic directors and our coaches are aware, so they've already have a list running of students that they need to have conferences with and their parents.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Dr. Benitez?
Dr. Camarino, I don't recall, at least in the last close to three years, getting a report, and it's, I don't know if this is, I just don't remember, or if we do a report, on how are our student athletes doing in terms of GPAs, grades, you know, getting on, I'm losing the term here.
Eligibility to participate, yes. Typically, as I've worked at two of our high schools, in a popular sport, right, with a lot of athletes in there, whether it's track, it's our biggest, or cross-country is our biggest typically sport, or football, we usually have between four and six students. So at a particular high school that I followed up with, that, you know, we know have high DF rates, it's again the same number. So unfortunately, it's multiple Ds and Fs versus now, instead of being a 1.8, a 1.0, 1.4, more like a 1 or a .8. So those are the issues that we are seeing with the numbers. So the number's still the same, but the credit deficiency that we're worried about, which is huge, right? We do want them to participate, we want them to be connected to the one thing that they love, whether it's a sport or extracurricular activity, is to ensure that we understand the deficiency piece. And as you probably all know, from the high school perspective is, if we can get our freshmen and sophomores to stay on track, then the rest of it is really simple. I mean, we don't lose the students after freshman and sophomore year. So this really impacts typically, most of the time, our freshmen into the first quarter, second quarter, and some of our sophomores. But again, in this one, in this case, we did see some juniors and seniors that fell into that category with the same number between four to seven at some of our schools. Particularly in football, obviously, right, because we're in that season now.
Do you think we could get some kind of update once we start the new academic year? Just to get a sense of sort of what, how many students are impacted by the new eligibility exceptions?
As far as they're eligible, but they would have not been eligible?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, we could run that information, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an action item, so I'm going to need...
May I clarify one more thing, too? Just so students and families know that are listening. So if they leave June 2020, the final report card that's coming up now with a below 2.0 GPA, they would still fall under the category of being on probation. So as they go into the fall semester of 21, 22, we would hope that they don't fall into the below a 2.0 after the first quarter report card that comes out, because then that would make them ineligible. So they'd be the first group that would be ineligible. So that's, after this is done, the first group to be ineligible would be students below a 2.0 in June and below a 2.0 in the fall, first semester of the fall 21, 22 school year.
Okay. So I think we're ready for our motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five zero. Our next agenda item is the Land Use Covenant and Agreement by and between District and the Department of Toxic Substances Control for the Avalon K-12 school property. And we have Mr. Rising to speak to this item.
Thank you, President Craighead, Board Members and Staff. So today we're presenting a land use covenant and agreement between the district and the Department of Toxic Substance Control as it relates to the Avalon K-12 property. So beginning way back in 2001, the district identified that there were some environmental concerns at the island, there were some land contamination in the soil that had existed historically at that site since prior to the turn of the last century. Working collaboratively with the Department of Toxic Substance Control resulted in 2012, ending up with a remedial action order from the Department of Toxic Substance Control, which had us out there looking at removing various different soils at the school site that we've been doing since 2012. Ultimately, that has ended in the last action which we took, which was just a year ago, last summer, that we were out there removing some additional soils. This land use covenant and agreement is really the next step in that process. What it amounts to is it's putting some property restrictions on the property so that any future work, any future actions that would happen at that, at that school site or at that property would need to follow a prescribed set of rules that are dictated by the Department of Toxic Substance Control, which includes getting prior approval from the department following the regulations and requirements in order for the removal and the impacting of those soils and the proper disposal and handling of those soils beyond, beyond the removal. This is a requirement for the Department of Toxic Substance Control so that we can be, continue to use the property. I want to note, because we use a lot of words like hazardous and toxic and those kind of things, the Department of Toxic Substance Control has confirmed that there currently is no hazard to any students or staff that are either occupying or using the site because the soils that we're referring to are all down below the ground, they're below the buildings, they're below the asphalt or concreted areas. So there's no ready access for anyone to get there. The reason that we're doing this agreement is in the future, if we have to do something like build a new building or do some substantial work at the school site, that we'd need to have a set of rules and plan in place for how to deal with some of that soil that would remain underneath the school. So we're presenting that to you today. And also, on the agenda was also an agreement with Leighton, who's going to do the monitoring, ongoing monitoring and confirmation that the district is following along with this plan that's associated with this land use covenant. So I'm available if there's any questions. I know I went through that quickly.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All right, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Rising. I don't, I don't think we have questions.
I didn't know if this was the proper time to address...
Right, right, right. We had, yes.
About our local hire program. So back in January of 2020, the district entered into an agreement with our, with our local trades partners, with our Community Workforce Development Agreement. Prior to that, we've been, we've been maintaining a local hire control program, which we continue to monitor. monitor and track currently, just giving some numbers about our success with our local hire program. Our latest results show that we have about a 22% local hire rate on all of our construction projects, which represents just shy of 600 local workmen and workwomen that are on our project that help us to do the work that we do. So that's a substantial increase of somewhere around 370% since the time that we began tracking this back in April of 2018. So it's been a lot of great work. We're very, very excited that our Community Workforce Development Agreement that we've been able to forge with our union partners is going to double that. So our agreement is going to include goals of 40% local hire, so we'll be doubling that. It's also interesting to note that at the current time, we're at kind of a low point in the projects that we'll be doing. We'll be accelerating our projects as we go forward. In fact, next week, we're bidding out Jordan High School's next phase of work, which is subject to the Community Workforce Development Agreement. So we'll be really excited about the number of local workers that we'll be able to bring into that project to help us execute that work as we go forward. The Community Workforce Development Agreement included other things such as student opportunities to be able to enter into the workforce and work on our construction projects, apprenticeship opportunities for avenues for students to be able to be exposed to the construction fields. We've been working very closely with the high school office to develop internship programs. We're really hoping that this summer will be our first internship program. We will be reaching out to high school, both juniors and seniors, to give them some opportunities on our very own construction projects right here in Long Beach to be exposed to those different trades. And so we're excited about the great work. Also, the union will be providing an apprenticeship coordinator. We are working with the unions now on who that person will be, and they'll be working with our high school office to help get the great word out to our high school students that there are opportunities in the construction field as we move forward. So we're excited about this corner that we're about ready to turn and all the great resources that'll be coming from our partnership with our local trades unions.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Alan, and I'm super excited that we're going to, you know, we've been on pause, obviously, and there's been some postponements because of our COVID environment, but happy to hear that that first project, that Jordan, is going to be under the auspices of our Community Workforce Development Agreement. So excited, just like you are.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, so I heard you say the use of an apprenticeship coordinator. I'm assuming that's very similar to like the City of Long Beach's jobs coordinator services?
Yes, similar. So the idea is to have someone who was funded by the unions that could work with our project Lead the Way folks in our high school office to help meet with school sites, to help get the word out to school students, you know, high school seniors and juniors about opportunities that exist within the construction fields, both the professional side, architects, engineers, those type of things, as well as the construction side, to be able to get into fields of the skilled trades, electricians, plumbers, those type of opportunities.
And with the future report outs regarding the new projects, is there going to be a metric also capturing that data as well?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, included in our agreement were a reporting metric, so we'll be tracking that. We'll be bringing that information to the board to talk about the success of the program and, you know, our relative success in meeting the goals that were established in the agreement. Yes.
Sounds good. Looking forward to it.
Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, just on that point, I want to thank Alan and his team for working with our labor partners and coming up with what is unique to our Community Workforce Development. There isn't that position in others. I hope that it will be replicated, because one of the things we said that was critical is really having an opportunity for our students to be exposed to all of the different trades. It's not just one or two. It's dozens and dozens of trades. And so by partnering with our labor partners to say, "Come tell our students about the opportunities that you have for them if they're interested in those trades," was really important to us. So again, kudos to Alan and the team, and working with our labor partners to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, and I don't need a report about this now, but I'm very interested in the relationship between what we're doing for the trades, what's written into our project labor agreements, and our linked learning, our career technical education programs, our pathways, because it's one thing to just say, "Hey, there's this available if you want to go out and do that." But if we actually have, they can work through our pathways, I think their chances of more success is there. I'd love to talk about that more.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, thank you for providing that update, and we look forward to hearing about this in the future.
Great, thank you.
And next on the agenda, we have the Equity Policy Development Update with Dr. Brown.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. And thank you for the opportunity that you've allowed since the end of July to make an update of the work that we're doing with the development of the Equity Leadership Team and more recently, the work of the Equity Leadership Team. We will meet for the fourth time tomorrow, and the group has already produced a lot of work, and that work has been focused around the creation of an equity policy. At our March meeting, we spent time reviewing samples from other districts to include the California State Board Association Equity Policy Guide. And we worked through a process of asking members of the ELT, the Equity Leadership Team, to identify what they liked in those sample policies, what they didn't like, and then correspondingly, language that they would absolutely like, need, want to see in our policy, and language that they would like to not see in our policy. From those documents, and they did a substantial amount of work in our meeting, creating Google Documents, really crafting language that could be used, from those documents, I assembled a draft. And so, and that draft is based on their words and their concepts that feel compelling based on what they reviewed and the experience that they're having in our school district. Tomorrow, we will return with the draft, which they received last week on Friday, and I've asked them to beat it up, to beat it up and to say more of the same. What do they like? What do they not like? What do we need to change? And if you want to suggest a change, that's great, but offer a solution based on that requested change. And so that's the process that we're in. There have been some expressed concerns around the timeline that I've kind of charged the group with. So what I've shared with you a number of times and with the group is that our goal is by June, we bring a policy before you for your consideration and hopefully your approval. And that June timeline has caused some concern from some group members. That concern has been, wait a minute, why are you rushing? Why so fast? We don't want to be a rubber stamp committee. Do you have a document already made? We're concerned about that timeline. And I appreciate all of the candor and the honesty that has just come from this group. It's something I'm really encouraging and wanting. We brought them there to do work that will benefit all of us, and we want them to express themselves in a way that is real and that helps us move our work on behalf of students forward. So in relation to that June timeline, what I've said is a couple of things, and I'll share with you what I've shared with them, and I'll reiterate with them again tomorrow. What I've shared is that I pulled a June timeline because, A, when you bring 30 passionate people together to work on something that is hard, you need a goal. And so I put a goal out in front of them. The other thing that's important about that timeline is that there's some urgency in the work and that we don't reopen the school year again without an equity policy. We don't have one currently. And you hear about the work that we are engaged in and that you are supporting in our district, and that is that we have a number of excellence in equity initiatives without a guiding policy to land those initiatives. And so this feels extremely important. Having said that, I'm not wedded to a June timeline. I'm wedded to quality work that reflects the needs, wants, desires of this group and of our district, and really reflects our core values around equitable practice in our school district. So if we need to move from that June timeline in order for people on the team to have their questions answered and for people to feel both proud of the work that we've done and also like they want to attach their name to the work that we've done, then we'll modify that timeline. But I'm going to hold us to the idea that we need to begin the school year again with an equity policy in place. Having said that, I also wanted to mention that something that is unique about this policy, I don't think we have another policy that has been created by a group of stakeholders. We have a number of policies that we have created and then sought feedback on, but this experience is very different in terms of asking a group of community stakeholders, parents or guardians, staff combined, to work on a policy from the idea through inception to completion. And so we're going to learn a lot. We're already learning a lot in this process, but I think that the process in asking our stakeholders to create the document that then ultimately you consider and hopefully approve is authentic to the practice of equity. I also think that we don't have to live with the document that is created and approved for 10 years. In fact, I would encourage us not to do that in the spirit of equity and recognizing that we want our values to change with the community that we're serving and the circumstances that we're serving them in. So those are some updates about the work that our Equity Leadership Team is doing. I also just wanted to highlight that before we meet again on April 22, we'll be convening our Student Equity Leadership Team, and they're a really wonderful, smart, completely capable group of young people. We have used their voice and their experience to seek input. And so at our next meeting, Dr. Erin Simon and Dr. Claudia Sosa Valderrama will be coming to do a focus group-style conversation with them about the social emotional learning practices that we are working on and just to gather some student input about the things that we should be considering. So I welcome any questions that you have about anything I've said or anything I haven't said.
Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I hope that tomorrow is a genuine, authentic, hard, but productive meeting, right? So looking forward to getting an update at our next board meeting, as well as the Student Equity Team. So as you were sort of sharing the timeline consideration, right, as a goal, I'm wondering in what way, if any, right now, our, I think we called it a working, Equity Working Group, the additional 100, is playing and/or is anticipated to play moving forward?
Thank you for asking that. That's been definitely a learning process for how to incorporate those groups into the work without overriding the work that the Equity Leadership Team is doing. And so tomorrow, I'm going to be bringing a consideration before the group. Our original plan was to come up with a draft, review it with the Equity Leadership Team tomorrow, and then in the next two weeks, go out to the work groups for more input. Given the process that we've just experienced and the idea that there have been some concerns about the idea of rushing, I'm going to recommend to the group that we do another iteration amongst the Equity Leadership Team before we bring it out to the work groups for more feedback. One of the things that I'm learning, I want to own as a part of my own learning, and I want to acknowledge that it's feedback I've received from the group, is that we want to make sure that we're clear on where the input is coming from and that we've selected this Equity Leadership Team and that the concept of the work groups, which was really to extend the community voice that we are seeking in the work, that that voice doesn't then overshadow the work that the ELT is doing. And it's a part of my learning in the process is I recognized in the spirit of wanting to get a lot of input, it's important to, A, know where the input is coming from, and B, make sure that the first consideration is with the group that has designed the document. So I'm going to propose a modification to the group tomorrow on that idea.
That sounds great, Dr. Brown. And I thought about that as you were describing the unique process, that this is really a community stakeholder policy development process. And so that in and of itself, you know, I remember that we had so many folks wanting to be a part of this process, right, in that group. But also, that it upholds one of the things that we've been talking about in our governance conversations, which is sort of what our role is as a school board, right? And it's to uphold community's vision, right? In this case, around equity. So this, you know, back to the urgency, you know, not in terms of a June deadline, but in terms of guiding our excellence in equity work, that as a board, there's also, you know, how do we define equity? What does that mean, right, in terms of how we represent the community's vision around equity? So that's what made me think about, as you described, this unique process of a multi-stakeholder really policy development, that it's reflective of the shared governance, shared community vision role that we represent here on the board.
I really appreciate your question, and I'll share that one of the things that I'm learning in this process and I feel very conscious of is that when you bring a group together that is passionate and has had strong experiences, some of them positive, some of them not, in our system, that any recommended change to what was originally stated heightens that mistrust. And there have already been a number of circumstances where just in the leadership of the work and my own learning through this process, I've modified and changed from what we originally said, because as they share more, we know better, right? And so there's this delicate balance that I'm seeking, and I'm just very candidly and humbly sharing the balance that we're seeking in this process. And that is around really listening to the feedback, having a vision, but being willing to modify based on the feedback that we get and showing that that actually can build trust. We're not there. That's going to take a while, but that that modification based on feedback given can actually be trust-building. Right now, it's trust concerning for them. And I want to acknowledge that and say, "I see that, and we're willing to just continue to push forward together with that."
Okay, any more? Oh, Mr. Miller?
A lot of my early questions when I first pressed the buttons has been answered already. So thank you. I guess the part that I did want to make sure that I drove home as well when we're talking about the process of creating an equity policy is recognizing, at least in my position, that why it's so important, one, as I will be using this policy as a tool, that what I look at with all of the policy being created moving forward. And so when we're talking about how folks like myself will use that tool, I'm assuming that the community will also use that same lens, and we want to make sure that all of those voices, all of the demographics, all of those parents in particular are being heard in the initial draft of that policy. So as you continue to use the term evolve, right? I think that that is going to be the most difficult part about, I guess, the social maturity that we all are going through when it comes to this topic. And so allowing people the opportunity and districts and the bureaucracy to evolve when it comes to the institution of new policy and the creation of new policy, it's going to be challenging. But I do want to challenge you and the folks on that ELT to continue to push through, and let's trust the process.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, and I just want to thank you in light of where we are and where we've been in this country around equity issues and around racism and white supremacy. It's a really tough time to be convening, to have these conversations around something that seems abstract like policy when it's such a visceral feeling for folks. So I want to thank you for holding with care the community that comes fairly traumatized at times, especially where we are in the last couple of weeks, in the last couple of days again. So as you come together, thank you for uplifting a space that is safe for parents to come and be frustrated and angry and have a lot of feelings. And I just want to thank you and your team for continuing to create a space that allows our community to come together and have these hard conversations.
Thank you. It's an honor, and we didn't get 250 applications because people aren't interested. So thank you for that.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Brown, and thank you to all those volunteers who are doing the work. who are doing the work. Next, we have report of board members, and we will start with Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, President Craighead. So just a couple of items for me today. On March 28th, some parents and the community organization organized a, I'm going to forget the title, but I think it was Boom, We're Staying on Zoom event, celebrating the accomplishment of students being virtual for a year. And so, thank you to our superintendent for stopping by. FYI, first time I see Dr. Baker dancing a little bit there on Zoom. We had a great DJ. It was great.
Was that recorded?
It wasn't. It wasn't, unfortunately, right? Otherwise, we would have used that. Also, I want to thank board member Kerr for stopping by and for your support as well that day. But I wanted to give a really, a shout out to, it was basically parents that approached me the week before our elementary schools were going to return in person and just basically said, hey, let's not forget about our kids remaining online, right, our students remaining online. So just if you will indulge me, I want to thank our emcee for the day, Carl Kemp. All, you know, volunteered Amber Vera Mendoza, Melissa Morgan, and Nubia Flores Cedeño from Long Beach Forward, DJ Jedi Mind Tricks, who kept the students dancing and entertaining the whole time, and as well, all the students and families that showed up and joined and had a good time. We had activities from the aquarium. Just a fun time recognizing the historical accomplishment that students have made. So just wanted to highlight that. I have my community office hours next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. If anyone's interested, you know, check out my social media for more information on that. And then I want to reiterate something that was already mentioned today, participation in the LCAP Forum on the 24th, all right? So we talked, we covered a lot of stuff today. We've been covering a lot of stuff. Dr. Brown just shared with us how hard and important our equity work is in alignment with our equity initiative. So I want to encourage our community members to attend that forum. It's part of our process, not just as a means of compliance that we have to do this, but as a means of informing, guiding, shaping our work moving forward. And it also happens to align with the budget as well. So for folks that watch, that are critical, that have either lost trust or are trying to build trust, this is an opportunity to engage, right? So just want to encourage as many folks as possible to attend that forum and really be on the lookout in the next couple of months as we incorporate community input and stakeholder input and have it reflected in our LCAP plan. Dr. Baker, I'm not sure if you're going to mention that our draft is, okay, so I'll hold off on that. So I hope everyone had a good Easter break. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Mr. Otto.
I had to smile when Dr. Camarena said, described just now as kind of the beginning and getting a start. And then I thought, yeah, well, it is football season, and that's a little disconcerting to experience that. Because it doesn't feel like the beginning of a school year. It really feels like the end. And as Dylan Bernstein has told us, there are lots of things going on about at Wilson High School and at other places about the end of this school year and celebrating what we've done. But you know, it really is a beginning in that with the increase in vaccinations, the decrease in disease, COVID disease, the decrease in deaths, the moving from to the next to lowest tier, it's beginning to think, make me think about what's next and what's next for Long Beach Unified. And there's a lot of great things happening. I think we deserve, this district deserves a pat on the back for what it's done over the last year, how it's managed to keep students first, to keep students in the forefront of what it is that we do and to persevere through all this. And it just leaves us at, where do we go from here? What's next? How do we take the hard lessons of this last year and keep growing this district? It was inspiring to hear about the labor negotiations. It's inspiring to hear about the work, the facilities work that's being done and is going to be done. And so we find ourselves in a pretty good position. And I alluded to it earlier, but I'll say it directly now in that is that what this district thrives on is the trust that it's committed, that it's obtained with this community. And that's seen us through, listening to the work about the Equity Task Force. I see you're in different places, but at the same time, people are working together. And so, I'm excited about the summer. I'm excited about what it is that we're going to be doing. We've got a lot of work to do as a board. And I think that we're up to it, and we've come through a very, very tough, indeed unusual, unique time. But we can now focus on where do we go from here as Long Beach Unified, and I'm glad to be a part of that. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Well, I know when we're here, most of our metrics are focused towards aptitude for the most part, right? But I have often brought up how the district is also an experience creator. For me, one of those key experience creators was Mr. Petrie. I know that he is retiring, well, is officially retired, and I can honestly say that he is one of those teachers that I remember very vividly in my Long Beach Unified School District experiences. He was the, I would say, that was the first time that I actually auditioned for something and got accepted. And what people don't recognize is that for a kid, that's a big confidence booster. You, and you can't discredit that. And I think that when I think about Mr. Petrie and how many kids he may have subtly created a new level of confidence for was what he did for the district more than anything. So I wanted to personally thank Mr. Petrie and wish him well in all of his new endeavors. He took me to my first symphony. I got to sing soprano. You could probably tell from my high voice. Really, really pleased to be a part of the orchestra with Mr. Petrie. Second, I wanted to just take a second to unfortunately acknowledge the tough situation that people are dealing with in the city of Minnesota. My thoughts and prayers are with the Wright family. But more importantly, I think that as we continuously talk about these topics of equity, we're constantly reminded from the media and situations like that, that we still have a long way to go. And so I think that it's important for us to acknowledge the space, but continue to push forward. So as you continue to pay attention to what's going on with the Chauvin trial and/or paying attention, what's going on with the Wright family, I hope that people watch these meetings and recognize that there's still a level of hope when it comes to people interested in equity and making sure that this district is good for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Kerr.
Sure. I'll be brief. I just want to thank the parent groups, the parents, the community members, employees who consistently comment and tell us what they think, what they need, what they hope, what they dream for Long Beach Unified. To the parent groups I've met within the last couple of weeks, thank you for continuing to lift up the positives, but also the challenges and the struggles and giving your ideas and input on ways that we can continue to support all of our students. And to our students celebrating Ramadan, have a blessed and happy Ramadan. That's all.
Thank you. Well, I want to congratulate Poly Vocal Jazz Group. They performed God Bless America at the YMCA Good Friday Virtual Event. They did a great job, and it was nice to see them in this big community, well, virtually a big community event. I'd also like to thank the principals at Berchem, Cleveland, Gant, Henry, Holmes, Madison, Newcombe, Riley, and Twain for including me in their virtual parent meetings prior to the return of school. The parents voiced many questions and concerns about safety protocols, questions about the uniform policy, daily health screening, what will be the same, what will be different, that type of thing. And during the Berchem meeting, I noticed that the principal had a very unusual haircut. And I found out that Mrs. McCready has had, well, shaved the side of her head as part of an incentive in the program, the Kids Heart Challenge. Last year, they raised $2,700. So she challenged them to raise $3,000 this year, and she promised to wear a Wonder Woman costume. Well, they not only raised 3,000, but they exceeded that. So she said she would sit in a dunk tank if they raised $5,000. Well, they not only raised $5,000, they exceeded that. So she said, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure she was confident in saying this, that if they raised $10,000, she would shave the side of her head. Pretty sure she thought that was a safe bet. Turns out, wasn't, they raised $16,000, and she shaved the side of her head. So good for her. Good on you, Ms. McCready at Berchem, and those kids that wanted to see their principal shave half her head. And also, I'd like to say congratulations to the National PTA Reflections Program. It's an annual art contest, and we had winners from across the district. There was Julian Purcell, a fourth grader at Naples, and he advanced three levels, excuse me, to the California State PTA. And he was awarded the Award of Merit for dance choreography. And Ryan Chalmers, an 11th grader at Poly, won an award for film production. And Nava Tate, a sixth grader at Hughes, won an award for photography. And then, before I move on, I need to acknowledge our SARB because in Sacramento, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman, announced today that 20 school attendance review boards, or SARBs, have been designated as model programs in California for their attendance strategies during distance learning. The announcement of these model SARB awards comes after an unprecedented disruption of in-person attendance due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's an understatement. As an example, Long Beach Unified School District is a model SARB because its attendance strategies focus on quality interactions with families and students to promote improved attendance. This includes looking at students and families' unique needs and providing personalized supports to remove barriers to attendance. SARB members are assigned follow-up with each referred family to provide materials, asynchronous work assignments, and links to community resources. SARB members also connect with community partners to ensure that families have access to timely and quality services. By working with the family and community as parents, sorry, as partners for children, Long Beach Unified, Long Beach Unified's SARB provides families with a supportive and empowering experience. So I would like to present this to Dr. Erin Simon. We were given this award. Yes. And I'd like to say that I was honored to sit on a SARB panel a few years ago. And I'll tell you, that has left an indelible mark. I know you're nodding your head, too. The work that's being done on these panels is incredible, just the level of care and nurturing in dealing with some of these, you know, individual, well, individuals that need extra care and nurturing. I don't know how you do it. I don't, but I'm just so glad you do. So I'm going to present this to you.
And President Craighead, thank you so much. And I just want to take this time to recognize Dr. Claudia Sosa Valderrama, who is now our Director of Student Support Services and who has really taken attendance to a different level this year. She's worked collaboratively with our level offices to create a multi-tier systems of support, this re-engagement plan for our families, and also has helped our schoolside teams further understand the importance of home visits. And many of our folks have conducted these home visits even amid COVID. It's been a pleasure for me to conduct them. I do them all the time. I always tease folks and just tell folks, I don't tell my mother when I'm out there. It's because I like to canvas, you know, the community and just meet people and understand their situations and how to help them. But I have to give the credit for this, right? At least a shared credit and responsibility to our new Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Claudia Sosa Valderrama, and the amazing team. But thank you so much.
Well, thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for the work that's being done by the team. And it's well-deserved to have that attention from the state and the state superintendent. So congratulations. Next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Baker.
Thank you for allowing me to end the evening tonight. I'm going to have my colleague, Robert Tagorda, come to the podium. And while he's doing so, I just want to add my voice of appreciation and encouragement to what has gone on to reopen schools. Walking the hallways of elementary schools the week of March 22nd and interacting with our teachers, the stories that they told, the energy that they felt, and what it was like for them to come back into the space that is what I refer to as sacred space, to see their colleagues absolutely sent, just energized. It energized the building. It energized those of us who were coming and going. And I just loved that opportunity to hear from them. And then March 29th, to be at Alvarado Elementary as we welcome students back along with our mayor. For me, it was the first day of having students in schools since I became the superintendent. So I sat there and stood in several classrooms with tears in my eyes, thinking, you know, the why we do this work. It wasn't that we didn't know why all these months, but just to sit and watch students in front of us was really important. A lot of convers, we've had a lot of conversation about students being online and students being in school. And I just want to acknowledge the hard, hard work that is happening to make sure that both of those environments are good for our students. Something that feels also important is that the return of staff, especially teachers, but also other staff to their buildings, where they can collaborate with one another, where they can think about the resources that they want to offer, is good for students who are staying online as well. It's not just good for students who come in person. And I've been so proud to hear the stories of outreach by principals, by teachers, by counselors, by recades. I mean, our, I just think of teamwork with not just a capital T, but the entire word has been capitalized in our district, across departments, across roles. And there's just the whatever-it-takes sentiment. I have seen every place I've gone. Like, I couldn't be more proud to be the leader of this team. We did We did, we were the first large district to reopen. And while it's not a contest and it was not a race, it's an important part of our work as a school district. And so again, I'll thank the efforts of our city health department that have worked incredibly close with Dr. Brown and Mr. Zaid, our mayor, who has been advocating for our educators to have access to vaccines from the moment that he could and the early planning that went into that. It's not a race, but it's an incredibly complex equation to open a school district for 70,000 students, even if they aren't all returning for in-person this year. In fact, that makes it even more complex. And so I am just so thankful for this place that we get to do our work, where we get to continue. As Mr. Otto, you said, think about the future. And I'll say to middle and high school, you've got this. You have had the path laid in front of you. You have great leadership in your level offices and your principals and your teachers, and you've got this. And we look forward to, to seeing students back and to those who will stay online for the rest of this year. You've got this. I also asked Mr. Tagorda tonight, we're getting ready to get into the LCAP season. You've heard that from community members. You know, we've engaged in lots of budget engagement processes. And so it's not an agenda item tonight, but I asked Robert to just share some of the resources that will be available for those who want to start to engage in looking at LCAP resources. And we will be back again. So again, not an agenda item, just some information that I thought would be helpful for community members. And instead of me telling you, I asked Mr. Tagorda to come and share with you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, members of the board, executive staff, and members of the community. This is a follow-up to the conversation that we had at the March Board Workshop, where we had an in-depth conversation around the budget engagement process and how it was leading to the development of our Local Control and Accountability Plan, which is effectively our strategic plan authorized by the state of California in conjunction with our annual budget. It represents a considerable amount of work by all of our stakeholders in the district and all of the departments in our school system and all of our school sites who are serving our students day in and day out. And I'm very proud to say that tomorrow at Close of Business, we'll be able to post in English, Spanish, and Kamai the first draft of our Local Control and Accountability Plan. And it's part of, over the next couple of weeks, a series of conversations we're going to have with stakeholders to gain additional insights as to what their aspirations are and how they can be captured in this plan, culminating in the final version of the LCAP being presented to the board before the end of the school year. So in this slide, I just wanted to provide a couple of dates. The first is tomorrow. Again, this is when the LCAP draft will be posted. It will be available on lbschools.net. And if members of the public click on the section right in the middle of the webpage that says Local Control, they'll get access to the documents in multiple languages. What you'll see there are a culmination of the conversations that we had last month and all of the presentations that the board received in this very room during the workshop. Conversations around the Excellence and Equity Agenda. You'll note that front and center of this document are all of the equity initiatives that all of our departments are spearheading at this particular time to support our students leading up to the next couple of years in order to ensure that they can continue to be successful. There's also conversation around the budget engagement process and all of the feedback we received from stakeholders incorporated into that plan so that it reflects the values of our community. It also represents an opportunity for the community to provide written feedback to the district. So there will be a link on that webpage that, that shows that people can continue to provide additional ideas that can be incorporated into the plan. And then, as, as Dr. Benitez mentioned, on April 24th, from 10:00 to 12:30, alongside and in collaboration with community partners, we're holding a community education forum where we're going to have dialogue on the specific draft of the LCAP that's being released tomorrow. This is actually the first time that we're going to have a community forum after the draft of the plan is, been published. And it gives a unique opportunity for our public to provide that kind of engagement that they're looking for around specific ideas that are embedded in the plan. Now there, there's a link here that's provided on bit.ly/lbusdforum. Already, we've sent this out to families and we've, we've already gotten some registration for this event, but we are going to continue to promote the opportunity for folks to participate in this community forum as one of our first engagements specifically related to the draft of the plan. So I want to thank Dr. Baker for affording us this opportunity to share with the board our follow-up from, from the Board Workshop. And I'd be remiss if I didn't spend a few minutes thanking our translators who are in the back, who are actually, right now, some of them are still working on the translation of this massive document. It's much longer than a normal LCAP because it incorporates both the 2019-20 plan as well as this year's plan. And they've just spent an inordinate amount of time ensuring that it, it is accessible to all members of the community, specifically in Spanish and Kamai. And so I want to thank them for all of their hard work and efforts in ensuring that we can meet this deadline for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Okay, so let's see. Do we have any announcements?
Oh, go ahead.
Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, just a couple of announcements. You just heard about the LCAP Community Forum. I want to reiterate the invitation for the teacher recruiting event on April 21st from 4:30 to 5:30. The link is available through HRS, so Mr. Zaid's going to send it to me so I can post it as well to some folks who have asked. And I also want to draw our attention to the Poly's Green Schools Working Group has been working for a year and I have been meeting with them probably since December to really push us to make a commitment to clean energy moving forward as a district. It's something that's happened in districts around the country. And they have been working with one of their teachers to bring us information eventually around making a commitment to addressing climate change in a real way. So they are hosting an Earth Day webinar event on this Saturday, April 17th, from 4:00 to 5:00. You can sign up online. So shout out to Diana Michelson and her entire team at the Poly Green Schools effort. So if you can drop into their webinar, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, so I'm going to re-extend the invitation, Board Member Kerr. I'm going to actually make, make the announcement building on some of the comments that Mr. Miller made. So I truly believe that, that teachers can change the world. I'm a reflection and a product of great public school teachers that changed my life. And in the context of another black man being killed, Mr. Dante Wright, a young black man being killed, for anyone that's listening, for anyone that wants to share this message, if you want to advance equity in our district, if you want to fight for social justice for our students and communities, if you want to dismantle institutional racism, we want you. We need you. Teachers can change the world. Educators can change the world. So if we really want to take a systematic approach to dismantling institutional racism, we need you to come to this virtual recruitment night, teachers and administrators, April 21st, 2021, 4:30. If you're about equity, then you should be here in this district.
I like how you tied that all together. Well done. Mr. Otto, did you have an announcement? Oh, your mic is on. Okay, well, I would just like to thank Dylan for spending the evening with us. I hope it lived up to your expectations. Thank you for, okay, thank you for being here. Also to Dylan's mom, thank you for being here. And if there's no objection, we will adjourn. All right.